The meeting will come to order. Please find a seat. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the special town meeting of November 1st, 2023. I am Tim Goddard, your moderator. Every town meeting must be called pursuant to a warrant issued by our select board, and that's the case with this special town meeting as well. Hearing no objections, I'll forego the reading of the warrant and begin by reviewing the return of service. And I've inspected the warrant for this town meeting and have determined that it was properly executed by the select board, and return of service was made by a constable of the town of Littleton. We are in session. As is our custom, we'll now begin with the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now, as has been our recent custom, we're going to have a rendition of the National Anthem by Mia Clements, a student at Littleton High. And this is about the third or fourth time in a row we've had her, and before we know it, she's going to graduate, and then we're going to conduct auditions, I think, for the -- but, thank you. Yes, Mia, go ahead.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the realm parts we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Mia. Great job. Just a few preliminary matters before we get started. And as we come together in this civil assembly called Town Meeting, it's important to remember this is a tradition that's older than the Commonwealth itself, coming together to make decisions about our community. So as we deliberate, let's advocate vigorously for our positions, but not at the expense of others. It's possible to disagree with others disagreeably, I mean agreeably, sorry. It's also possible to be disagreeable, yes, respecting our neighbors' views equally with our own. And keep in mind, our neighbors are all good people, too, with hopes and dreams as aspirational as our own. And let us remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community of ours is of greater importance than any differences we may have. I hope that everyone picked up, as you came in, a copy of your town meeting report unless you brought the one that you got in the mail at home, and also if you picked up this beige update sheet. Between the two of these items, you'll have the current motions that will be before you tonight. Any non-voters hopefully have taken a seat in the -- my right front of the bleachers, but the section of the bleachers closest to the registration tables. And please remember, you -- obviously, you can't vote. You can't also speak without permission of the moderator or permission of the meeting. The emergency exits are on either side at the front of the hall, and the door you came in, in the back, is also an emergency exit if it becomes necessary to use it. I'll just remind you that our general procedures, presentations can be 10 minutes in length. Speaking to an article, we limit debate to three minutes per person, and you can't speak twice on the same article. And also, we have a guideline, if you will, that no new business can start after 10:30 p.m., unless a town meeting agrees and wants to continue, and we've had that happen as well. Also, unless there's an objection, I intend to recognize to speak all town employees and consultants regardless of whether they are residents or voters. And we've already spoken to the situation of non-residents and non-voters. Okay, we have just a few more items. When you're addressing town meeting, please use the center microphone, wait to be recognized, and state your name and address for the record. All questions, please, through the moderator. No rude or disrespectful marks, no direct references to individuals. Calling the question or motion to close debate, this sometimes comes up. If you're moved to do so, please use the microphone to do so and make it the only comment you make at that time. No speeches, it has to be the only thing you mention at that one time. And generally, debate has kind of gone on for a while, and most people are ready to move to a vote whether or not debate has been closed. And I'll also remember, recognize, where are the town officials who wish to express personal views, should identify that they're speaking as an individual and not as a board or committee member. All right, I think we're ready to begin. And we'll start with our call of the articles, our consent agenda procedure, which we've used successfully in the past. It's used more extensively, I think, at the annual town meeting because there are more routine matters at the annual meeting, more authorizations, reauthorizations, more perfunctory business is done at the annual town meeting than at the special. And you'll see on the screen and also in front of you, we've got 20 articles on the warrant tonight. They do not all work for the consent agenda, in my opinion. Generally, we stay away from zoning articles, borrowing articles. There are a number of transfers on this warrant that are of substantial amounts, and they're for projects that the town really hasn't weighed in on to any great extent, so we're not going to include them as well. However, you will see the articles that are proposed for the consent agenda, and they are: Article II, Bills of Prior Years, we've seen that many times before; and Article V, Rescind Borrowing Authorization; Article IX, Overlay Transfer, CPA Recreation; Article XI, Senior Center Stabilization Fund; Article XII, Park Rec. Community Education Revolving Fund; Article XIII, Amend FY24 Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget; Article XIV, EHS Sampson Fund; and XV, Right-of-Way Taking Foster Street. Oh, I'm sorry, and also XV, Rescind Acceptance of a State Statute for Outdated Positions in Town. So those are the articles that are recommended for the consent procedure, and you'll recall that we take a single vote, we bundle the motions together for each of those, take a single vote, and thereby essentially vote them all at once because they're deemed to be not controversial and really probably not the reason why you came here tonight. And it gives us more time for some of the more important articles. So with that, I'll quickly go through the article numbers again that are in the consent calendar, and all the rest of them are not. And if anyone wishes to put a hold on any of those, you can. Generally, the consent articles pass by unanimous vote. One of the articles in the consent agenda is Bills of Prior Years, that requires a nine-tenths vote. It's kind of a quirky thing in the general laws, so unanimous vote would save us the trouble of having to determine what nine-tenths of the body is. So we'll give it a go here. And again, the list, Article II, Bills of Prior Years; Article V, Rescind Borrowing Authorization; Article IX, Overlay Transfer, CPA Recreation; Article XI, Senior Center Stabilization Fund; Article XII, Parks Recreation and Community Education Revolving Fund; Article XIII, Amend FY24 Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget; Article XIV, Sampson Trust Fund; Article XV, Right-of-Way Taking Foster Street. Hold. All right, and Article XVII, Rescind Acceptance of a State Statute for an Outdated Position. Okay, if I could ask the gentleman that put the hold on just to identify if you want that to be debated later, or if you just have a question as far as that, if it's a quick question, we can deal with it now. If you wanted -- if you just want to debate it in the normal course of things, we can do that, but.
Mr. Moderator, basically, a question as to what it's all about and whether there are any payments the town has to make to the affected landowners.
Okay, thank you. Is the DBW director handy? If we could just quickly answer that, if it can't be, then we'll just remove it and deal with it later, but. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stephen Yonlin, Director of Public Works. What this article does is authorize the select board to acquire easements for the Foster Street Phase 1 project. Any funding needed to acquire these easements has already been approved in prior budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Is that a satisfactory explanation? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll now proceed to a vote to approve Articles II, V, IX, XI, XII, XIII, XIV, XV, and XVII, inclusive of the motions found in your town meeting report and tonight's update sheet. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
All right, that is not a unanimous vote. And we can go actually a couple of different ways at this point. If it would help, I can pull that nine-tenths vote out of it, and then it's a two-thirds vote for all those articles, and then it would pass, obviously. If that's, or you could just start from Article I and just keep going the way we usually do.
Mr. Goddard?
Yes.
Could we take XV out of there? My nay was because I thought we were going to get more explanation for XV, so I didn't put a hold on it. So could we, if we could remove XV, I would be happy to change my nay to a yea.
Yes, we can. And on my own initiative, I'm going to remove Article II.
Thank you.
We'll remove Articles II and XV from the consent. So now, the revised motion would be, is to approve Articles V, IX, XI, XII, XIII, XIV, and XV, inclusive of the motions that are in the town meeting report and the update sheet that you received early this evening. All those in favor of the motions under those articles, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. It required a two-thirds majority to pass that bundle of articles, so the motion passes by the necessary two-thirds, and I declare a vote. Thank you very much, and we'll deal with Article II and Article XV in the normal course of things. Thank you. All right, now we'll come to Article I, which is a report from the Master Plan Implementation And before we get to the report, the town meeting's actually got to vote to hear it. It's been moved and seconded by the select board that the town vote to hear the report of the Master Plan Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? Okay, declare a vote, and we'll now hear a report from the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Thank you.
How's, loud enough? Too loud? Well, welcome to town meeting, and on behalf of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, I'm happy to be up here and talk to you just a little bit for just 10 minutes max about the master plan. And how are we going to work this? Do I tell you next slide? There we go. So the big question is, what's the master plan? And what we realize is, a lot of people don't know what the master plan is. So the master plan was created in the year 2017, and it lists, it has a list of goals and accomplishments to be met by the year 2030, which means that's a 13-year plan, and we're just about halfway through that right now. It wasn't just a group of people sitting up here who created the plan. Over a period of, I don't know, a year, maybe more, we met any from, it was widely publicized, and hundreds of people from the town came together, and we met, and the plan was developed. A consultant was involved, and the plan was drawn up. And here you go, this is the plan. It's actually something very tangible. So it reflects a wide range of priorities and insights developed by the residents. It is comprised of eight key themes, and if you look through here, you can see it's divided. Those are Littleton Common, Plan Growth, Thriving Town, Community Health and Well-Being, Equitable Development, Building Local Capacity, Legacy, and Active Government. But within these eight key themes, there are 67 actionable goals. So let's go to the next slide, please. So by 2030, we are going to try to meet all of these goals. Why are we here tonight? Goal number 46, Establish a Master Plan Implementation Committee. We've done that, actually, that's goal number one. To promote and implement this plan, to evaluate the town's implementation process, and to recommend plan amendments as needed to the Littleton Planning Board. Halfway through the master plan, this may be a time we want to talk about some amendments. So that's one of the reasons we're here, not to talk about them tonight, don't worry. To ensure Littleton residents understand that many town initiatives are tied to the master plan. And MPEC members are stewards and messengers. We don't have any agenda. We are just here to do what we're supposed to do, which is to help implement the plan. And lastly, to explain our communication process, a little hanging in there, with committees and boards to update the progress report. So where do I find the master plan? People don't seem to know this, which we've come to find out. So first off, you go to the town website. You go to boards and committees. Underneath Boards and Committees, you'll see the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Underneath that, you're going to see two key things. You're going to see a copy of the master plan. By the way, there are a couple of hard copies at Town Hall, but like one or two, so I do recommend that you go to the town website. And there's also the progress report. So if you can have the next slide, please. Oh, by the way, this is, if you have your phone in your hand now, take a screenshot. This is going to take you right to the town website, right to the MPEC's page. If not, when you go out, there's about five of these QR codes right on the wall. Shoot your phone at it, and you can be taken right there, and then download it whenever you want. Okay, so who are our current members? Myself, I'm the chair, and let me back up a minute. In addition to having citizens as large as we're called, we also are required, I don't know if we're required, or it's just good practice, to have someone from the planning board, someone from the select board, someone from the school committee, which we do. We have all of those members here, as you can see, I'm sure you recognize many of the names. You can see our terms, and we do have, it says here we have a vacant position. We actually do not, we have an applicant, and we're just trying to, we're just waiting for the time period of getting her signed in. So at this point, all seven positions have been filled. So what, so the annual progress report. So now our task was, we have the master plan, it's huge. How are we following it? So we've created something, and it's, this is 29 pages long, and again, it's right on the website. It outlines, in your first column, the, what the key theme is, in the second column is the established goals, again, there's 67 of them, the achievements we've made towards that, and in the final column, the status. It will either say achieved, in progress, or a future goal. So what is the context of initiatives in tracking these achievements? Let's just take two, two, just to give you an idea. Goal number two has to do with redevelopment in Littleton Common. Some of the things that are tied directly to that are the rezoning of 550 King Street, the rezoning of 25 Robinson Road, which is, connects to the Northern Bank Building, special permits issued for the mill. These are all connected directly to the master plan. Goal number three, investing in some infrastructure. Form-based codes was voted in in 2020. That gives us aesthetic control and direction for any new development in these overlay areas, such as sidewalks, such as setbacks, such as architectural details. We're really fortunate that that got voted in, and that will guide us through all the redevelopment. So can you go back one? I think we missed one. Oh, the master, also the master bike and pedestrian plan, which I think it says here that it's being, still being considered, and I believe, Michael, that is established at this point in time. So that's fabulous, we've got a really great infrastructure there as well, again, connected directly to the master plan. So other initiatives, I realize some of these are a little redundant, that are directly tied to the master plan that we have over the last six and a half years that we have accomplished, these are big things. The new library, the new senior community center, the smart sewer, development in the common, creation of different types of housing, more transparency and technology upgrades at Town Hall, conservation and recreational spaces and facilities, adoption of form-based code, preservation of open space, commitment to better bike and pedestrian areas, and upgrade to Shaker Lane. Again, just, just a few bullet points of what's been accomplished. So we are achieving what we set out to accomplish with the master plan. So looking forward, the question is, are we meeting the goals of the 2017 master plan? I think we are, we've made really good progress. But the bigger question is, should any of the goals be amended or added? For example, just in the last few years, since the pandemic, the way that we were distributing vaccines in town, that was something we never would have thought of in 2017. EV charging stations that we need more of in town, again, things we never even thought about. Anyway, you can imagine, there's several things that have emerged that we probably need to talk about, and so, which leads me to the next slide, is, do you want your voice to be heard? Do you have suggestions? We'd love to hear them. But download the report first, become familiar with it, see where we are with the progress report, and what we're hoping to do is create an open forum meeting, and by the way, you can come to any meeting, we operate under open meeting law, everyone's always invited, our agendas, our notes are on the website. But let's talk about what we might need to do if we want to do, if we want to amend the master plan. And then lastly, how to enact change. Attend board meetings and planning boards, select board, listen to what's going on. Run for office, join a committee, share your voice in productive ways, not just on social media. Take advantage of the new planning board and select board open office hours. It's wonderful that you can have one-on-one time. And remember, these folks all have full-time jobs, and yet they're willing to sit and spend time with you, so take advantage of it. And last, lastly, embrace, embrace change and be open-minded, and remember, as earlier, we are all in this together, we live here together, and we have different ideas, but let's try to make Littleton a better place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to Article II, and you can find the revised motion for Article II on the beige handout sheet that you picked up earlier this evening. And it, the motion is moved and seconded by the select board that the town vote to transfer $3,294.57 from available funds to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal years as printed in the handout. And the, you'll see the select board, and I believe the finance committee also recommend the article. Does anyone from either board wish to speak to it? It's a pretty routine article. Does anyone wish to address Article II? You'll see there are four invoices totaling $3,200, $3,300 that were from a prior fiscal year, and they cannot be paid without a nine-tenth vote of town meeting. If no one has any comments, we'll proceed to a vote on the motion as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? I declare it to be a unanimous vote, thereby satisfying the nine-tenth requirement. Thank you very much. And we'll then move to Article III, Electronic Voting Equipment. It's been moved and seconded by the select board that the town vote to approve Article III as printed in the warrant, so just as printed in your town meeting report. There's no update to the motion.
Hold.
Oh, we're, you don't have to hold it, we're going to, we're going to have a discussion. That was just the motion. And is anyone who wishes to speak to Article III? Or first, any boards or committees that have comments to make? I guess if people have questions regarding Article III, the select board and the town clerk, we're happy to field them. If you could come to the center microphone and identify yourself and give us your question. Thank you.
John Ledger, 3 Roger. I vote that we go against voting machines and continue the traditional way, paper ballots, hand counting. There's less likelihood for fraud. Thank you.
Okay. All right, go.
Jared Elbiore here.
Yes.
New Estate Road. As I understand it, this is basically the equivalent of the ballot and checklist without all the overhead, and this is strictly for town meeting, it's not for state or federal elections. Seems like a good idea to me because one of the things you notice with, especially a hand count, is a lot of peer pressure. You don't want to be the one person putting up your hand when everybody's voting the other way. You don't want to be the one person putting up your hand when everybody's voting the other way. So this preserves the anonymity and probably gets a truer measure of town, of the actual town opinion. The only question I have is, is this equipment all properly certified so that there's very little risk of miscounts and other problems? I assume there's got to be some kind of a state cert. And I think it also works out to about 30 bucks a unit, if you take the 21,000 divided by 700. So the clickers are pretty cheap. And I just want to be sure that we're getting good equipment that's not likely to cause problems at the town meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm now going to recognize our town clerk, Diane Croory.
Good evening, everyone. To the, through you to the previous two speakers. The first speaker, as Mr. Delpiore said, this has nothing to do with our elections. This is strictly for town meeting. It is regarding our checklist and ballot. If you recall, the last time we took a checklist and ballot, it took us almost two hours. So if you want to go back to two hours of checklist and ballot, we'd be happy to deny you this. But this takes 30 seconds to take a vote. 30 seconds. Nobody beside you will know how you're voting. Nobody near you will know how you're voting. The, the procedure is quick, easy, in 30 seconds, up on the screen, you'll know how everybody has voted. What will happen is the total will come up first, and then it'll say yes, 50 votes, no, 20 votes, and there's your total. So you won't know how the vote is happening, but you'll see the total. So you won't be pressured into voting one way or the other. Just the totals will come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, select board, Mr. Wilson?
Just to add a little bit more to that, if any of you watched a select board meeting we had, I believe, the past week, we did have the presenter, the owner of these, this equipment, speak to us and demonstrate how this, this works. And I think one of the questions was specific to the integrity of the system. He, that was one of our biggest concerns as well, obviously. And it, the area that it covers is very small. They can see if there's any, an intrusion of someone that's potentially trying to violate the system. The individual, if they know they, whether, did it, did it count my vote or not? It actually tells you that your vote has been counted. So we, we asked all of the questions, but please, over the next several months, when we're, when we're testing these for sure, bring those questions in, and we'll make sure, if we haven't already addressed it, that we'll get them addressed.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Charlotte Russell, 73 Foster Street. My only question is, if we're buying 700, what happens if we have more than 700 people at a meeting? Thank you.
Town clerk?
Through you to the previous speaker. So we pretty much get a feel for what we've been having at town meetings. We looked over the last 10 years of town meetings. We took an average. We looked at the highest meetings, which we had about 1,000. If we know that we have a hot topic, we have the ability to go to surrounding towns. This is why we are looking at the Merdia, and we can borrow their clickers. So if we know that we think that we're going to have over 700, we can borrow. So we already have an agreement with Harvard that if we need to borrow theirs, they'd be more than happy to help.
All right, thank you.
In 2008,
Yeah, excuse me, sir. You've already spoken to this article?
I just wanted to add to it.
Yeah, you, you cannot. Yeah, please, please sit down.
We voted paper ballot for the new police station. Took two hours. Good things aren't supposed to be fast.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Please sit down, sir. Thank you. Okay.
Marlene Goodwin, 12 Town Road. I'm just curious, how often do we have these kinds of votes where we need to count instead of just a voice call? Every meeting? How many times per meeting? How often will these clickers be used, essentially?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. So we could use it for every single vote we have at night, at, at any town meeting. But we've had it, so the last, last meeting, we did two ballot votes. The, in the last 10 years, we have had at least one ballot and checklist on four, five of the different, different meetings, which at each of those meetings, we, it took, you know, like I said, almost two hours. But we could be voting right away. You know, it's, it's, it's up to you. It's up to the voters, it's up to, you know, the moderator.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? If not, we can, yes, sir.
Bill Coromus, 33 Lake Warren Drive. I'm just curious what the security protocol and how the, the clickers operate, is what, operate through wifi? Does it operate through Bluetooth? What's the security protocol that's, that the transfer of the, these clicker votes are accumulated?
I asked that very question at the select board meeting last week. Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. The answer is, it is not a regular cellular wifi or Bluetooth frequency. It is a radio frequency. They use multiplexing, I believe it's called. They change frequencies every few milliseconds, transmitting from the base station to each of the individual units to make it very difficult to spoof, as well as encrypting the signals between the base station and the handsets. So it's a, it's a, obviously a closed protocol. It's not open. And, and they, it has been approved and certified by the DOD and the Naval Academy. He gave us several other examples of the House of Representatives of Massachusetts? Oh, I'm sorry, the U.S. House of Representatives. And they've done significant certification in order to approve it for those locations.
What's the security protocol?
I don't, I do, I did not ask that, and I don't know. But you're welcome to come and speak to the gentleman. I'm sure we'll have examples of it as we, assuming this passes, as we implement this throughout the summer. For next year.
That would be good to know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak regarding the electronic voting equipment? If not, we'll proceed to a vote. Or do I see someone coming? Yes. Yes, ma'am?
Barbara Staples, 4 Brook Lane. Question is, how long is this technology going to last before we have to put another 21,000 into it?
Through you to the previous speaker. I couldn't tell you. I know that one of the companies, one of the towns that is using this specific one has been using it for the last five years and has not had to update, upgrade it. And we didn't really get into that. We didn't ask that question, unfortunately. I apologize.
Okay. Anyone else before we move to a vote? All right, all those in favor of the motion under Article Three, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed? Okay, passes by the necessary majority, and I declare it a vote. Thank you very much. We'll move now to Article Four. This is an article that requires a two-thirds majority vote because it involves a transfer from the capital stabilization fund. And it's for supplemental 2024 capital items. It's moved and seconded by the select board that the town vote to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant. And as you see it on your town meeting report that you received in the mail. And you'll see that the finance committee and select board both recommend this article. Does either board wish to make any comments before we take questions?
Just quickly,
Yes.
the, the major portion of this, obviously, is the 400,000 that would be used for the design and documents for, to put out the bid at, at Indian Hill. So, and then, coming before you at the next town meeting in May, that's when we would present to you the results of that and what that, what that looks like as far as what we're going to have to pay for the improvements on Indian Hill and that property.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I have a question. How does this relate to Article Eight, which is also funding for Indian Hill?
Sure, I'll, I'll speak to this. So this one is actually taking money out of capital stabilization. Article Eight is actually putting money into capital stabilization. So that, that would be, I believe that's the difference, correct?
So Ryan Farrar, interim town administrator. So an Article Eight is not specifically for Indian Hill, but is giving an example of what we'd be putting money into the capital stabilization for. So potentially, what, what our hope is, that, is that with the 400,000 we're asking for in Article Four, we'll be able to go out, get bid docs, and then come back to the annual town meeting with bids in hand, give you a sense of what that full cost is. We, we are estimating it'll be no more than, well, I can't, I'm not going to speculate what that'll be. That's what this process is for, and we'll let the bids come in because it's been a very unpredictable environment for bidding. But that, the, so basically, this is, this is for the design and to get bids in front of town meeting. And then the other piece is just a contribution toward the capital stabilization fund.
But it, but Article Eight does mention Indian Hill.
It does, as an example of where we might be able to then later take, using it as a funding source for that work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, George Shannon, 672 Gray Road. I got a problem here with this 440,000 here for Indian Hill up there. Because we had the town administrator stand at the meeting and tell us that it was going to be cosmetics. Why? Because the town had already had a consultant to look at Indian Hill and come to find out that it was solid, but it was not available for the senior center. So when we came through February, we came through and we was at the rush of the purchase debt. So I stood up here and said, it's a good deal. You're getting two pieces of property. Now, I look to have that 440,000 to be in the amount that is in eight here. And it's not for me, because I intend to put an amendment to it to reduce it down to 2,000,000.5.
Yeah, please contain your comments to Article Four, please. We'll get to eight.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm, I'm just telling you in advance here, I don't think that this 440,000, we should vote on it to give it to them. Let it come out to Article Eight here. Because you told us that it would be less than 2 million dollars to do the cosmetics up there, brighten it up and make it fresh and make it smell good. Well, that's what you told us. And now we come in here with articles asking for this amount of money and ask for that amount of money. So I'm telling you that on this Article Four, we should kill it. And let them take the money out of eight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to be heard regarding Article Four?
Yes.
Jared Elpiore, this will be quick. As I understand, Article Eight is just transferring funds from one account to another. It is not allocating them to Indian Hill.
That, that is correct.
Correct.
I'm getting that from the board. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak specifically at Article Four? Requires a two-thirds majority. Think we can proceed to a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Four as read, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, that is a two-thirds vote to my ears, and the motion passes. I declare that as a vote. Thank you very much. Now move to Article Five, was voted previously, so we'll move to Article Six, ambulance replacement. Okay. And again, the motion is fairly simple. Moved and seconded by the select board that the town vote to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant. And I'll add the town report. Okay. Do we have a presentation? We want to hear from the board or the chief or someone to explain? Town administrator?
Sure, Ryan Farrar, interim town administrator. So basically, this is to fund a new ambulance. We are, having come from two funding sources, 250,000 from the ambulance receipts reserve fund and 175,000 from the capital stabilization fund, which is what warrants the two-thirds vote.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody wish to be heard regarding Article Six, the ambulance replacement? Okay, please come forward to the microphone.
Hello, Mr. Moderator, John Ledger, three Roger. I believe the ambulance is still in mint condition, and it would be excessive right now to buy a new one. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to Article Six regarding the ambulance?
Jared Elpiore, again, this is quick. First of all, does the state set the service life? So even if the ambulance is in perfect condition, has to be retired after X number of years? And I guess ambulance receipts isn't quite a break-even proposition.
Mr. Moderator, if we could have maybe our, our interim fire chief, Tom Clancy, speak to this?
Yes, I think that's an excellent idea. All right. Interim Chief Clancy?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Tom Clancy is still interim fire chief. To go to the first question from our neighbor on Rogers Street. Mint condition is a relative term. This, this ambulance is nearly 11 years old. I've easily spent, last year, at least $10,000 trying to get it to go straight down the road. And it was supposed to be retired four years ago, and it got put off. And what we ran into is, it's very difficult right now to find a chassis to build an ambulance. So I ordered a chassis last November, or my dealer did. And finally, in July, when he said, you have no VIN number, I came before the board to say, I need to get an ambulance. And we need to, when it's available, we need to buy it. Because I, I found a chassis in July. I have an ambulance that could be built and delivered by the springtime. I can't afford, we, we have an ambulance revolving account that we're going to try to fund this ambulance for. We do have the funding for that. And that's the idea behind the ambulance billing program, is to allow us, rather than come and say, let's raise an appropriate money to pay for a new ambulance, the receipts we get transporting the sick and injured, of which we do over 1,000 transports every year. I need two reliable ambulances in order to do that. And that's why we come before you now for this appropriation. As far as state mandates on service life, they don't put a service life timeframe on an ambulance. They set the guidelines on how the ambulance has to be built and what equipment has to be on it. And I, I just would like, I can't stress enough how much we need this new ambulance. So if there's any other questions, I'll be here all night.
Nice. Thank you.
Andrea Kern, Middlesex Drive. I've had the pleasure of riding in both ambulances over the past year, and we need a new ambulance.
Yes, sir.
David Harding, 19 Russell. I had the opportunity to ride in the old ambulance as well, and if you wanted to have no noise, that's not the ambulance because it rattled like you wouldn't believe.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak to Article Six? If not, we can proceed to a vote, understanding that it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion as read under Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, that's a unanimous vote, and I declare that. Please record it. Madam Clerk, it's a unanimous vote to approve. Thank you. We'll now move to Article Seven, which you can find on your update sheet that you got at the door. Okay. It's been moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town transfer from the FY2024 general fund budget to the Select Board. Other expenses account 011-225-20-578000. $385,000 for the purpose of paying additional costs of a feasibility study to rehabilitate the Sheikah Lane Elementary School located at 35 Sheikah Lane, Littleton. In addition to the costs approved for the same project under Article 23 of the 2022 annual town meeting, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Littleton may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Sheikah Lane School Building Committee. Littleton acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost Littleton occurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of Littleton, and that the amount raised and appropriated pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between Littleton and the MSBA. Okay. That's the motion. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to that particular motion? Anyone from the board, school department? If not, we can take questions as they come. But yes, Select Board member DeCoste?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, just to give a quick summary, we voted last May to allocate $700,000 for the feasibility study for Sheikah Lane School, and the MSBA, the state agency that oversees all of the school building projects, based upon like projects across the Commonwealth, advised us that, although they advised us that the 700 is probably going to take care of it, they re-advised us that it was going to cost closer to $1,000,000 to $1.25 million. So we were looking at it, and we allocated, talking with the FinCom, we decided to allocate an additional $385,000, or at least present that to town meeting in order to get the best feasibility possible for that project.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishes to be heard with respect to Article Seven? Yes, sir.
William Reese, 2A Mathieu Drive. I'd just like some clarification. Is the feasibility study for replacement of Sheikah Lane or renovation, or is that yet to be decided?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. It was B. It's yet to be decided, so we're going to, all of the contractors came out and took a look and walked through, and so now that's in the process.
Sure. Actually, that's the, sure. So, Mr. Moderator, through you. Basically, that is the point of the feasibility study, to be looking at whether renovation or replacement is the correct way forward. So that's really the point of this request for the additional funding.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard regarding Article Seven? Requires a simple majority vote, and we can proceed to that vote if no one else, and it doesn't look like anyone else is looking to speak. All those in favor of the motion as read under Article Seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, passes by the necessary majority, and I declare it a vote. Thank you very much. And now we move to Article Eight. Moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant. So it's a $4 million transfer from the overlay reserve account into the capital stabilization fund. Yes, sir.
Darrell Baker, Griss Mill Road. Based on the conversations that occurred during previous article, just a clarification to the moderator. Which part are we voting on? I think we're only voting on the actual text of the warrant, not the bracketed bolded material, which is just non-binding explanations.
That's intended to be explanatory. Correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear, we're only voting on what is actually written there, not the comments in there, and I think that's critical for people to make sure they understand. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
George Sanders, 672 Great Royd. My opinion, I don't believe we had two-thirds votes on number four. That's why we need to click her. On eight here, as I stated early here, we had the officials tell us that it wasn't going to cost $20 million to renovate Indian Hill there because someone said, what is it, $2 million or $20 million? And my concern here is that we believe what we was told, and now the cosmetics is somewhere out of shape here now with regard to the cost now, and I do not believe that we should just transfer. What you find in the bold black in here, that's usually the intent that the officials are going to use the money for. So I want to make a motion, Mr. Moderator, to change this $4 million down to $2.5 million for this. And you have a budget now, if this passes, to go out and see what you can do with the cosmetics of this building over here. Now, this week, I understand you already spent $6,000 over there because the gas line over there was leaking on the outside to the meter because they shut the gas down when we bought the building over there. And that being the case, now they need to heat it up over there now, and if we had in the summertime, had the heat over there, and it was leaking on the inside as well as the outside before it got to the meter. So we've been paying for that gas that been wasted. If lighting struck around there, it'd blow the building apart. I believe that we're entitled to you do what you say you're going to do.
Point of order.
Point of order, yes. What's your point of order?
We're going down a road of the discussion of Indian Hill, when this is specifically taking money out of the overlay, putting it into capital stabilization, which we've done in the past many times over, and this is potentially being used. We don't know exactly what the cost to renovate Indian Hill, whether we're going to go with a phased approach on how we can fund this over the next few years, or whether we're going to try to do it all at once. That will be presented to the town at a later meeting. What we do know is we have $21 million within the next five years of capital projects, which this money is going to help offset and use for. So whether a lot of that is Indian Hill, that will be for the town here to decide in our next town meeting from the feasibility. So that's where we're at. I know there's been a lot of discussion. We're all, I don't want to scare anyone, mortified, I guess, of the costs that have arisen on construction, on everything, and yes, that property was purchased, and I stood in here, and I was told the same thing you were, Mr. Sanders, on the cost to renovate that building. And now, yes, costs have almost doubled. So this is where we're at, and we'll see where this all ends up, and we're going to try to be the best fiscal responsible as we can and phase it if possible, but we want to get people in there. We need to start using a vacant building.
Okay, we still have a proposed amendment out there without a second. The amendment?
I hadn't finished, Mr. Moderator.
I was waiting for you to take a breath before I got the second.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, just really quick, Mr. Sanders. It's going to require another vote to take money out of capital stabilization to use it for anything. Okay? Just one, that will be identified later at any projects that we want to take money out of there for.
I know that. I know how the system work.
Okay, had you concluded your remarks, sir?
I hadn't concluded that, Mr. Moderator. So I wanted to say that I think that the citizens here tonight, we ought to hold their feet to the fire and see what they do with the money because right now, they don't know what they're going to do with the money. But it seems strange that they asked us to buy something, and now it comes up to the time that when someone wants to change what they want to put, because nothing was ever discussed with the people about this $4 million. So I put a motion in that we reduce the $4 million, Mr. Moderator, down to $2.5 million for Article Eight.
Yes.
I hope I get a second here.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion to amend the article, reducing the amount of $4 million to $2.5 million. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second. Okay, the discussion is now open on the proposed amendment. The proposed amendment only at this point, whether the amount should be $4 million or $2.5 million. So the floor is open to debate on the amendment. Thank you, sir. I'll also recognize the Finance Committee before we open it up to debate.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steven Vinoody, Finance Committee. To reduce this amount that's going into the stabilization account, right now, we're not discussing Indian Hill. We're discussing putting money aside in a savings account. To reduce that money means these funds are left unused in this fiscal year, and it falls to what's called free cash. And free cash has to wait to be used for two fiscal years before we can use it, and they're certified by the state. That means we're taking a billion and a half dollars off the table to fund the capital projects that we're going to need in the next couple of years. The town departments just gave us their capital budgets for FY25, and as Gary just mentioned, the five-year plan is $21 million. Doesn't include what's happening with Sheikah Lane. Over the next fiscal year in FY25, we're talking over $2 million in capital projects, and we're taking money off the table from our savings account. I'm sorry, but it doesn't make sense to me. I urge you to reject this amendment, keep the $4 million, put it in our savings account, and let's get on with our business. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the proposed amendment to reduce $4 million to $2,500,000? Yes, sir.
Jared Opiori, again. Thank you, Steve, for, through the moderator, I want to thank Steve for explaining this. As I understand, we're not spending a penny of this. It is strictly moving dollars from one account to another, and the only way any of this can be spent is via another town meeting vote. I would suggest we reject this amendment, vote the original amount. It seems to make the most sense.
Okay, thank you. If there's no one else that wishes to speak to the amendment, we can take a vote. All those in favor of the amendment to change $4 million to $2,500,000 in this transfer article, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion clearly fails, and we're back to the original motion as read. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bruce Tornell, 201 Harwood Avenue. Just a question, I guess, regarding town government and funding. What's the overlay reserve, and how is that funded? Thank you.
Okay. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. The overlay reserve is a reserve that's used by the assessors in case people like to complain about their tax bills, they can go to the appellate tax board. We have to reserve funds there in this overlay reserve in order to rebate any taxes that we may have to give back to the businesses or residents of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else wishes to speak to Article Eight, we'll take a vote. Requires a majority vote because this is, these are funds going into capital stabilization rather than coming out, which would be a two-thirds vote. Therein lies the difference. So when these funds are one day used for a different project, it'll be a two-thirds vote. In any event, all those in favor of the motion under Article Eight as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, I declare it to be a majority, unanimous vote, rather. Madam Clerk, please so record. To declare that the motion carries and is a vote. Thank you. We'll move next to Article 10. Which? It's a amendment to the Fiscal Year 2024 Community Preservation Act budget. It's been moved and seconded by the Community Preservation Committee that the town vote to approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant. And you'll see that the Finance Committee and Select Board also recommend this article. Does someone from the Community Preservation Committee wish to address this article? Or anyone else for that matter? Select Board or Finance Committee? If not, we can proceed to a vote. Is that somebody coming to the microphone? It requires a two-thirds vote, incidentally. Yes, Mr. Montanari.
Sorry, sorry, I was a little late on this. Mark Montanari, 36 Tadaway Road. I have a question about the Community Preservation Fund and the money that they want to set aside for the recreation that's going on here. In, five years ago, when I sold 242 King Street to the Water Department, I donated $200,000 for park and recreational use that went into the CPC funds, and as of yet, they've never used it, and I'm wondering why they're not using that money now to build tennis courts, pickleball courts, whatever recreational needs that we want in this town, why they're not using the money that's been sitting there for five years, four years? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes?
Carolyn Mueller, East Roxbury Drive, and a member of the Community Preservation Committee. When we were going through projects this year, there were two recreation projects that were initially put forth. One was for the tennis courts. One was for lighting at Kerper Field. Originally, we were going to apply the $200,000 that was donated by Mr. Montanari to the Kerper Field Lights. The water commissioners and the Community Preservation Committee have a memorandum of understanding that the water commissioners would have input into what of understanding that the water commissioners would have input into what project that $200,000 would be applied to. The light project was pulled before it came to town meeting, so we never, you know, went through the step to ask the water commissioners if we could apply that to the tennis courts. So that money will just sit there in the Community Preservation Reserve in the recreation bucket until the next round of projects comes up at annual town meeting. And then we'll go back to the water commissioners and ask them if they want to apply the $200,000 to those projects.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
Ed Foltz, 619 Newtown Road. This doesn't feel like the right meeting to be asking for 700, whatever, $700,000 for tennis courts when right now the town is, the people in town are spending tons of money to pay taxes and other things. This is a big, big ask. Why is this not being held in the main town meeting where, to me, in my mind, that's the place for the big purchases? This supplemental is supposed to be just that, supplemental, you know, things that can't wait. Tennis courts, I'm sorry, they can wait.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
Jared Elbiore, quick question. $50,000 to paint and rehab some windows on the building, how extensive is this work and is it going to bring the windows up to any level of increased energy efficiency?
I'm your current president of the Historical Society. It's the most beautiful building in town. The windows are being restored, not just painted. The quote we got was a little over $100,000. The other company we talked to wanted $400,000. We're trying to be good stewards of the building. We don't own the building, the town does. We've already paid to waterproof the basement. We put in a new furnace. We knew if we came to the town, it would take forever to get these things approved and they might not be. So we're doing the best we can. If we don't get the windows fixed, it's going to damage the building, it's going to damage our collection. It's an important building, it's our history.
Thank you. Yes?
Good evening. Alicia Day, 28 West Chester Road, and I'm also the Director for Parks Recreation and Community Education. So I just wanted to answer some of the questions that had come up before. So first, the amount that's being requested through CPC is the $334,000. The $400,000 for the tennis courts was voted previously in Article 9. So just wanted to make a clarification on that. The reason that we're coming before you at this time to do this project is that it is very time-sensitive project. The courts that we currently have will be going offline to create the new senior center. With that, we will only be left with one tennis court in town, two technically, at the high school and for the high school team to actually be able to have a tennis team according to MII regulations. I don't know if I said that right, so my apologies. What did you say, Diane?
MIAA.
MIAA. I'm getting our town insurance confused. Anyway, but according to their regulations, the town has to have at least four tennis courts for a team to be able to play. So that is something we are trying to fix those courts in a timely manner so that there's enough tennis courts to be able to support the high school to play their, for their tennis teams. So that is the reason why it's come at this point and not in May.
Yes?
Charles Howe, 564 Newtown Road. My main question on this is why is the Park and Recreation Department in charge of a thing at the high school? So the Park and Recreation, do they have the legality to do a project on high school property? Why isn't this being brought up by the High School Department instead of the Park and Rec? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
So this project had originally started a few years ago and the concept design was to be to create a park, including the tennis courts at the Cooper Farm property. We came through all the steps that got shut down and the suggestion was made, well, why don't we look at renovating the courts at the high school? So with that, we've been working with the school committee and the central office to discuss what that would look like. And altogether, the park commission, the school committee, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee have all voted to approve this project.
Pete Marbella, Goldsmith Street. I'm a little confused by the $334,000. It appears to me that that's going to be a loan we're going to take from a bank. Is that correct? Hello?
Yeah. Finance Committee?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, the $334,000 will be borrowing, paid by the CPC funds.
Okay, and I saw a chart recently that claimed that our fiscal 2023 debt service was just north of $3 million. What will this add to our debt service? Hello?
Finance Committee again.
The plan now is to pay this off within three years. So it would be $125,000 paid down for each of the three years. So it'd be short-term debt that we pay.
So additional $125,000 on the debt service.
Paid out of the CPC funds.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, George Sanders, 672 Gray Road. I'd like to know how much money is in the CPC account?
Mr. Moderator, through you. Currently in the CPC accounts, we have about $2.5 million at the end of the last fiscal year, and I think we're slated to add about $800,000 to those balances in this current fiscal year. $400,000 will be used to fund these tennis courts.
Yes. Mr. Moderator, through you to a couple of previous questions. The CPC funds are funds that we pay in our taxes and go into reserve funds to be used for historical preservation, open space, and active recreation, active or passive recreation, and affordable housing, I'm sorry, this is four buckets. So these are taxes that we've already taken out of our pockets, frankly, and it's not, to one of the previous speakers, it's not something that we're asking for you to fund right now. And the funds are sitting in there. To Mr. Sanders' point, it is a lot of money and we definitely want to find ways to use that money because it's an investment that's made by all the residents through the CPA, the Community Preservation Act. And there's an article coming before us later on that if it had met the criteria, we could use that money for an additional purchase. Pardon me. The other part about the CPC, the Community Preservation Act, is when we put funds in, we have an opportunity to get a match from the state. And in the past, we've gotten up to a 40% match. If we put $100,000 in, for instance, we'd get a 40% match on that $100,000.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to Article 10? If not, we can proceed to a vote. It does require a two-thirds majority because borrowing is involved. All those in favor of the motion as read under Article 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Okay, that's a clear two-thirds majority. The article passes and please so record that, Madam Clerk. Declare a vote. Thank you very much. Well, now move. You'll recall, we previously voted Articles 11, 12, 13, and 14. And that will bring us to Article 15, right-of-way takings for Foster Street. And this also requires a two-thirds majority because it involves interests in land. Okay, it's been moved and seconded by the Select Board that the town vote to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant. I don't know if our DPWs, there he is, if we could get an explanation, Mr. Yanley, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stephen Yanley, Director of Public Works. Again, what this article does is this body will authorize the Select Board to acquire any easements necessary for the Phase 1 Foster Street project. For reference, Phase 1 is from Taylor Street to Balsam Lane on Foster Street. Happy to answer your question.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Cheryl Cowley-Hollinger, 44 Tadaway Road. My concern is unintended consequences with this bylaw. North of that area on Foster Street, drive, front yards are very narrow and the road is narrow also. And it happens the people on that road, sorry, it's the moderator, the people on that road happen to own right up to the street edge. And if you take their land by eminent domain, you will affect their property values. As a real estate broker, I worry about people's property values because their houses are pretty close. So I understand this bylaw is just for south of Foster Street, between, basically between the railroad station and Taylor Road, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Going all the way up to Balsam? I want to make sure, because of the way it's written, sorry, because of the way it's written, I want to make sure that it doesn't go further north of that, that this doesn't give anyone permission to start taking land by eminent domain on the rest of Foster Street. I find that very worrisome.
Well, through you, Mr. Moderator. As of yet, there's no talk of eminent domain, that we're not just taking land. That is one of the options. So you take it either by purchase, donation, or last straw eminent domain. And we're not technically taking property, we're taking easements. So you would still own the property, I just have the right to maintain a utility, maintain the sidewalk.
That is what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned that you would have the ability to force easements upon people on the narrower part of Foster Street, up between Harwood and where it bends onto Hadwin particularly. I, it'd be lovely to have sidewalks there, but again, I don't want to fort, you're going to affect people's property values. And I think if we're going to do that, we need to make a lot, do a lot more of talking and planning and concerning and thinking about compensating people for loss of property value and exactly where sidewalks would go. And I think that needs to be a discussion the town has. So I don't object to this, I object to the way it's written. I object to the fact that it's too broad and could allow more than what you're saying because it says, particularly, it says any, or take any action, other action related here too. We've had a lot of unintended consequences, in my opinion, in this town lately. Some of them are manifesting themselves in the common in the shape of six-story apartment buildings, which I didn't realize when I wrote it for the master plan I was voting for. So I'd like to try to limit unintended consequences. Does that make sense to people? So can we, can we limit this? Can we, can I propose an amendment, Mr. Goddard?
You could, you can propose an amendment. I would just like to ask, Mr. Yanley, if it's correct that the plan that's referred to here is kind of the limiting factor, correct?
Correct.
It doesn't extend the length of Foster Street, it's
Correct.
easements and takings that would be related to that particular construction project?
Correct.
Okay, as a member of the ZBA, we put language in all the time that says as substantially shown on the plan, that limits it to that plan. Can I suggest that amendment?
Just one second.
Oh, I see. It doesn't, in the actual language, it doesn't say anything about Balsam Street, the young lady just pointed out to me. So I'd like to make an amendment?
Hold on just one second. Town Council, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Harrington, Town Council, through you to the previous speaker. An amendment is not necessary to limit the action to the plan because the motion already limits the action to the plan. That's part one. Part two, we can't do anything without compensating owners. We don't get to take their land without providing damages. That's the statute.
I know, but in this town, we try to avoid eminent domain and always have. And you specifically put eminent domain in here. So you've given permission for it even though we don't do it. It makes me uncomfortable. So I'd like to make an amendment that says, plan to, as substantially shown in the plan, and only affecting the area south of, on, south of Balsam Lane to Taylor Street. Can I say that?
I think some of that's already there, limiting to the plan.
In the actual motion, or what's, what's in the black is the description, correct?
That's the script.
Okay, in the actual motion, it just references the plan, but then it says, or take any other action related here too.
That doesn't literally mean any other action, but go ahead.
Again, Mr. Moderator, Tom Harrington, Town Council, through you to the previous speaker. Have you seen the plan?
No. I admit I have not gone and looked at it.
So I
I wish it was, I wish it was, I mean, we have these wonderful
I have a copy here if you'd like to look at it.
Well, it describes
I believe it answers all your questions.
I just want to make sure that this motion cannot be applied further. And you're telling me it cannot? And you're sure of that? And I don't need to try to restrict it in any way, shape, or form, and I will never be at another meeting where suddenly that we're referring this passing at town meeting. You can assure me of that.
Through you to the previous speaker.
Town Council.
I'm not sure exactly what you're saying. What I'm saying is that our action is limited to what is shown on the plan.
Okay, I believe you, Tom. You're a good attorney and you've done well by the town, but I just, those are my concerns. And you're telling me I don't need to be concerned? Okay.
Okay, building on, Joanne Derry, Harvard Avenue, building on the previous speaker's comment, I would like to make a motion to include in the actual text of Article 15 a reference to Phase 1 Taylor Street to Balsam Lane so that it's clear in Article 15 that Article 15 only applies to Foster Street between Balsam Lane and Taylor Street. So item one. Item two, my own item, I see that it's going to include full roadway reconstruction. Could we consider, like, doing some traffic calming measures on Foster Street? The cars go really fast there because of the train station. We could put in, like, speed humps. There are, like, no moving parts. It's longer than the wheelbase of a car, so it, like, slows the drivers down. I don't know why we haven't tried this in town. It's plowable, you know, they're marked with paint, the drivers see them, but, you know, they just go really fast through there. So that's my idea. And I made a motion. Can anyone second it, I hope?
Could you, yeah, identify where that would go. We're going to need that in writing, I think.
You want me to identify where it would go?
Yeah.
Okay, I would say
Yeah, if you could come forward and put your amendment in writing, that would, that would help us all.
Come there right now?
Yes. But we'll continue while they're, they're writing up that amendment. Sir, go ahead.
Yeah, Quinn Canfield, 238 Foster Street. So I am the house on the north side of Balsam Lane, and I can tell you for fact that the article as written is not accurate because
the article as written is not accurate because we've already gotten a letter saying they're going to be taking part of our property by eminent domain. So there's something... something's not right here. So maybe someone can come at that. I mean, we have, you know, letters from an attorney and the whole bit.
I apologize. I was talking to Karen, so I didn't hear what you said.
We are on 238 Foster, which is the house one just north of Balsam. And we've already received letters from an attorney, which I'm sure was approved by your department, indicating that they're going to be trying to take part of our land by eminent domain to do this road construction. So it does not end at Balsam because we are north of Balsam.
Yep.
So the article as written is not accurate.
So through you, Mr. Moderator. You should have received certified mail package from me.
Perhaps. I'm not sure. I didn't bring it with me. I forgot. So I'm not sure where it came from, but nonetheless...
So after receiving the certified mail package from me that explains the whole process, I'm governed by Federal Highway Administration Guidelines on Property Acquisition. So after that, you would have received notification from an appraisal company, as well as, I believe, their legal counsel, that they were going to begin the appraisal process for any easements necessary. With my package, you would have received a copy of the plan, description of the easements...
I think you're missing my point. The article states it ends at Balsam Lane. It does not. My land is north of Balsam Lane.
Mm-hmm.
So it's going beyond Balsam Lane.
Fair enough.
I know, but we're voting on something that was very precise in the language, and that's not what we're voting on.
Well, again, through you, Mr. Moderator. As council stated, it's governed by the plan of record, and the plan of record is stated in the motion.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful to look at all that language that's in bold text and understand that that's not part of the article or part of the motion. In fact, there's no reference to Balsam Lane at all in the motion or the article.
Yes, there is.
Well, then I'm mistaken. But again, the plan is what governs the takings. The limits of the project are also the limits of the proposed takings.
Okay, but it says here... again, I know we all have the same thing, but Article 15 authorizes easement required by the town, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, including Taylor Street to Balsam Lane. It says it right there.
That's not the text of the article, but...
Okay. So I guess the proposal was here for motion to limit to Balsam Lane, and I'm asking for a second.
Okay, well, let me just read the proposed amendment that we received. It's to insert this language. This article to apply to the section of Foster Street between Taylor Street and Balsam Lane only. And it will be inserted in the final line, the second word, after "street." So it would be to insert language that said, "This article to apply to the section of Foster Street between Taylor Street and Balsam Lane only." That's the proposed amendment. Can I get a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay. So now the amendment is what's being discussed. Okay. So if you... if people have comments, it should be about the amendment only at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Ledger, 3 Roger. Foster Street is one of the oldest streets in the entire town. It's very quaint, very rural, rustic, and should remain so. We don't want Route 9 right there, and if we do that, it'll encourage speeding, and it just isn't necessary. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that wasn't on topic, but... yes, sir.
Bruce Tornell, 201 Harwood Ave. I'm actually okay with the amendment, but just, I guess, a comment I had as I was heading up here. It seems like the plan should have been described in the narrative and not just referred to a plan that most people haven't seen, right? So, and it seems the bold, it doesn't really describe the plan. So a couple of issues with this article, I think, but maybe we can fix it.
Okay. Town Council?
Again, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Harrington, Town Council. So point well taken from the previous speaker. If you do look at the plan, and I have a copy here, the project, I think, by Steve's words, essentially ends at Balsam Lane. There is tying it in to the road past Balsam Lane. Is that the best way to say it, Steve? For about another 100 feet. So by... if you pass this amendment, you're going to defeat the part of the... this plan. Just want to let you know that. Doesn't mean the motion's not legal. It's just not what's shown on the plan. And that what... yeah, so to Gary's point, you want to...
I'll just say, if you look at the plan after Balsam Lane, it's where you... there's basically a sidewalk that comes up out of Balsam Lane. It's for safety. The sidewalk continues just around the corner to the house the gentleman speaks to, and a crosswalk goes there to the other side where there'll be another sidewalk that goes all the way down Taylor Street. So that's why... that's what you're losing if you kind of limit it directly to Balsam Lane. I think that language was used, but in reality, yes, it is past Balsam Lane, so it can include this extension of a sidewalk and the crosswalk that goes across the street. Is that accurate?
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I, Reed O'Leary, 31 Foster Street. I'm interested in the context of this amendment, well, actually, in the amendment as well as the article and its relationship to the article that's coming up later on about the rest of the Foster Street development proposal. I guess my question is, is this article directly related to the rest of the Foster Street construction vision? Is it justified in terms of that construction only? Or would there be a need for this if that project were not going forward?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, through you. So these are... assuming that the previous speaker was speaking to the zoning article coming up.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, the two totally separate entities. This project has been in front of the town since 2018, has gone through various approvals for different funding. This project is in Mass DOT's Transportation Improvement Program. That's funding construction of well over $6 million for this project. And then also LWD is funding water main replacement in conjunction with this project. So again, this project would go on with or without that zoning. Doesn't matter.
Right. And I'm not really looking for the justification that's based on previous votes or authorizations, but a justification that's based on need. And it sounds like there is a need for this. It's a transportation need. It's a safety need. But it is not necessarily being driven by an expectation for some future expansion at the station or a residential build-out.
No.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I may...
Just a reminder that we're talking... just a second. I'll get to you in a second. Just a reminder that we're talking about the amendment only, not the article in general. So we'll hear from him, and then I'll get to you, select board member. Yes, sir.
Wayne Bryant, 76 Tadawon Road. The article as written references the plan. The amendment would make the article self-contradictory because it states something other than what the plan is.
I think... yeah, I think that council was pointing that out earlier. Thank you. Sorry. Select Board Member Morrison.
So, Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. So this... again, this project is based on the Complete Streets Program. This is something that we've been planning for, for several years. As somebody who drives frequently on Foster, I can attest to the need for additional safety measures on that road so that folks can get to the station safely and folks driving can drive safely up and down that road without worrying about pedestrians and cyclists, you know, being in their path. In addition, this is consistent with the master plan. It's consistent with the bike and pedestrian plan. So, yeah, there's... this is all... this is all the fruition of work that we've been doing for, you know, six years. It's been vetted by MassDOT and that is consistent with our town's objectives as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the amendment? If not, we'll proceed to a vote on the amendment. And it's to insert in the...
I just have a quick question about the amendment and whether it would legally kind of make the whole question null and void since it does conflict with the plan. And I understand this is Phase One of the plan. I understand also that the language used to describe it in bold is inaccurate. That was a mistake that someone made. I am concerned that someone is now speaking of having their land taken against their will, which we were assured wasn't happening in this phase. So if... we could have clarification if a vote on this amendment would make the whole question null and void because it would therefore make no legal sense at all. Thank you.
Okay. I'll ask council if he'd amplify his previous comments.
Again, Tom Harrington, Town Council. So my concern here is to restate that we have a plan that describes the work in great detail, and we're voting on that plan. This amendment essentially is in conflict with the plan, as I described, because this amendment has the work stopped at Balsam Lane, where if you look at the plan, there's sidewalk returns that carry on down, and there's crosswalks, and there's... they're going to tie the roadwork into the rest of Foster Street. So that's at conflict. Now, what the engineers are going to do with that conflict, I can't be sure, but we are creating a conflict.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Just to Mr. Harrington's comments here. So I think what you're hearing from a couple of people, and I'm asking this question again, too, which is, in order to vote on this article, that conflict needs to be resolved. I don't see how... I mean, you've had the question put to you a couple of times now, and there is a conflict, and I think everybody in the room agrees there is a conflict. So how can we proceed?
Well, we're going to vote on that amendment shortly.
So we either vote it up or down?
Vote it up or down.
Okay.
Right. Thank you.
Quinn Canfield, 238 Foster...
Yeah, I think we're getting some repeat customers here. It's...
I'm speaking to the amendment, not to the initial...
Okay. Good for you. You caught me. Go ahead.
As I see it here, the problem is that we all get mailed this flyer, which listed the town meeting this evening, and by and large, 99% of the people in this room don't go to all the town meetings that are held by all the board members here for different boards, right? So we only know what's printed here, and if you read this by any normal, non-lawyer account, it states that this thing ends at Balsam Lane, and that's not what's actually happening, or that was not what we're voting on. So that's my struggle here. So the amendment clarifies that. Whether it meets or not the original town plan for this is, to me, irrelevant. That's not what was sent out to us. What was sent out to us, you know, in bold, I recognize that wasn't the article, but it's a clarification in the article, states something completely different than what we were being asked to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, I think we're ready to take a vote on the amendment. Well, we've got another... well, we haven't heard from you, so come on. Come on down.
Sarah Rambacher, Hartwell Avenue. I believe this plan is probably on the town website. Is there a possibility of getting it onto the screens and telling everyone what to click on so they can look at it at their own little phone? Thank you.
Right. So, yeah, it's a little... I'm not sure about that, whether we can do that live because we weren't otherwise planning on it. But so I think I just ask for a vote on the amendment.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. If you wish to speak, please line up at the center microphone, not at your seats.
Cammy Bean, 27 Oak Road. Just to clarify, the words here in bold is not the article that we're voting on.
Correct.
The word "Balsam" is not in the article anywhere. Correct?
Yes, that's what I thought, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, there's been some confusion between the bold explanatory language, which you're not voting on.
Hi, I'm Robert Stevens, 28 Moore Lane. What happens if we do not approve Article 15? What's the consequence until we get all this question straightened out?
Yes, sir. Mr. Yanley?
Mr. Moderator, through you. If this article does not pass tonight, the town will lose its spot in Mass DOT's funding in this project. The town will have spent a tick over half a million dollars to have a project sit on a shelf.
But does that mean not approved for 10 minutes or forever?
Until the next time a funding slot for a little over $6 million construction project opens up, and it's a five-year tip cycle, so this project will sit for five years, probably.
Thank you, sir.
I'm voting to wait.
All right. We'll move to a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of adding the following phrase to the last line in the article after the word "street," in other words, in between the first and second words, "this article to apply to the section of Foster Street between Taylor Street and Balsam Lane only." So all those in favor of making that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, the noes have it. The motion... the amendment fails. And we'll move then to Article 15 as originally presented. Does anyone else wish to speak to Article 15? If not, we'll proceed to a vote, recognizing that it is a two-thirds vote because it involves interests in land. All those in favor of the motion as read under Article 15, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Okay. That's now that... I think we're going to go to a hand count on that. I don't think that was a two-thirds, but I want to be precise. So the town clerk has tailors appointed to count your votes. We're going to do a hand count on this. Give her just a minute to get set up. Okay, we'll be voting momentarily, so please hold your positions until that happens. It's a good argument for electronic voting, I guess. Maybe we should have reversed the order of the articles. Are we good? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as read under Article 15, please raise your hands, keep them held high until you know you've been counted by one of the tellers. I'm sorry, what? We're voting on Article 15? Did somebody miss that, or? Yeah, the amendment was voted down. It's the article as originally presented in your warrant book. If you're in favor of that, please raise your hands. There's somebody. I'll get the names. Oh, Sherry. Okay. Okay, all those opposed, please raise your hands and keep them held left until you've been counted. Requires a two-thirds majority vote. Who's gonna explain Article 16?
Ron Barker.
Ron Barker, okay. He's teed up for that, you think, or? Okay. Okay, we have the vote totals. There were total of three hundred and one votes gassed. Two hundred and one votes were required to achieve the two-thirds majority. There were two hundred and nine yeses and ninety-two noes, so that the article does pass by the necessary two-thirds majority. And I declare it a vote. Thank you very much. We'll move next to Article 16, which are some general bylaw amendments. And it's been moved and seconded by the select board that the town vote to approve Article 16, as shown on the handout and as printed in the warrant. Okay. I recognize, Select Board Member Ron Barker.
Hello. So, there's several parts to this article. The first is to change how we, the Select Board can appoint a town administrator, and when we last had, last passed this bylaw, we didn't have an assistant town administrator or anything like that. So, there was only one way we could do it, and that's appointing a search committee. This amendment, or this change allows us to, by supermajority, so four-fifths of the board, to appoint someone through other means, so that we, so we can make a permanent appointment without going through the process, which we are now on four months of. So, we could have made quicker progress. The next piece is just changing up some wording, or eliminating old board references in the bylaws. For example, there was a Park and Playground Commission at one point, there no longer is, it's now changing the bylaws to refer to the Park and Rec Commission. There was a Youth Advisory Commission, which no longer exists, so that's being cleaned up. There was one other one that was being, oh, yeah, Youth Advisory Council. And also, the other is amendment to Section 2 of Chapter 17, to allow the Assistant Town Administrator to be the Director of Finance and Budget. Currently, only the town accountant and/or treasurer collector can fulfill those roles, so it's allowing us a third choice.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard regarding Article 16, General Bylaw Amendments? Requires a majority vote, since it's a general rather than a zoning bylaw. If not, we can proceed to a vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 16 as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Hearing none, I declare it to be a unanimous vote, and I declare it a vote. Madam Clerk, please so indicate that it was a unanimous vote, and thank you very much. You will recall that some time ago, we voted on Article 17, so that moves us to Article 18, the first of the zoning amendments. And this is to amend the zoning bylaws regarding firearms business zoning bylaw. Requires a two-thirds vote to amend. And it's been moved and seconded by the Planning Board that the town vote to approve Article 18, as printed in the warrant. And I'll just ask if a member of the Planning Board will confirm that the requisite public hearing was held on this zoning amendment? Yes, Mr. Martinari.
Mr. Moderator, we held public hearings on it, and the Planning Board voted to approve, to send this article to the town meeting. What this article is, is basically, it's a cleanup of conflicts that we had in the gun bylaw, the firearms bylaw that we passed last spring, I believe. And the Attorney General sent this back to us to clean up the ambiguity in there, and that was, that's what this article does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And those of you who were at the town meeting, remember, no doubt, the long debate regarding firearms zoning bylaw. And our intent is not to debate that again here tonight. We're here to consider amendments that the Attorney General suggested would be necessary before they would approve that bylaw. So, we're really here to consider those amendments, they're in bold in the text, and so we're not going to allow amendments of substance to the bylaw, because this is what the Attorney General has requested the town to do. So, I don't know if the Planning Board, I'm sure they're happy to answer questions, but the changes are before you, and we can either approve them tonight, or if not, we'll be back in the spring, and they'll be asking us to approve them again, so. All right, anyone who wishes to speak with that, you know, stirring rendition? Anyone wishes to speak to Article 18? It looks like we, well, we have some movement toward the microphone, so we'd... Yes, sir?
Peter McLaren, 517 Newtown Road. Just on paragraph C, it ends with "or similar laws in other states." I'm not sure what that gets us. Laws change all the time. You're trying to keep track of what's going on in fifty other states, or forty-nine other states, besides what's going on in this state? I don't, I would recommend that be deleted.
Yeah, as I said, the changes that are outlined in bold are suggestions from the Attorney General on improving the bylaw. The rest of the text was approved by the town previously at a town meeting, so we're not going to debate any of that, and... No, I do hear, I'm just saying, I'm not taking any amendments on this particular article, unless it's, you know, a typo or something simple, but we're not changing it in any substantive way. Thank you, yes?
Jane Rosetti, Valley Drive. I would, I just have a question. Could someone explain the reason why revocation is replacing terminated legally?
I'll defer to Town Council.
Thank you, Tom Harrington, Town Council. Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. We took a bylaw last year that had been approved in other towns and brought it to this town for approval, and this town did approve it, and the Attorney General has approved it. So, this bylaw is in place. As part of the Attorney General's approval process, she wrote back to us and said, "We suggest you change the word 'termination' to 'revocation.'" So, it was at the Attorney General's request. She believes it's more in line with land use law in Massachusetts, and is more readily easy to apply.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir?
George Sand, 672 Gray Road. First question, Mr. Moderator. The E in this article, is this new information that came from the Attorney General?
Yes. Everything you see in bold was suggested by the Attorney General that town meeting adopt.
Okay, then, I think that if this came back from the Attorney General, based on everybody wanting to put the firearm business under control here in the town of Lilton, I think we have no choice but to do what they said, because if we change anything that is written down here that she sent back, then it goes back to her, and she checks it, and we changed it, then we still not going to get approved. So, I think we should vote it as it appears here in Article 18. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jared Alpeyra, again. Seems like the most substantive change is not allowing firearms business in the business district, and instead moving it to industrial B, which, if we want like a friendly quote-unquote "business district," would be the way to go. Did that come out of the AG, or was that something the town added? I'm just curious.
Counsel. Again, Tom Harrington, Town Council, through you to the previous speaker. I'm looking at Maron, but I believe that was just a typo, that was a typo in the last presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Peter Scott, Scott Road. Little disappointed that we're gonna accept the statement of one person. The Attorney General has agendas of their own, and we're just gonna pass it all off and say, "We gotta accept there that one person's decision," where we, as a body, I believe carries more clout than any one particular person. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Keep in mind, the Attorney General approves all bylaws in the Commonwealth. Okay, we're gonna, yeah, I think we're gonna take a vote now. And I'll give you my preview. Articles nineteen and twenty, I think, are going to take considerably longer, actually, than some of these that we've dealt with. So, my intention is to get a vote here on Article 18, and then we'll take a ten-minute recess, and we'll start back with Article 19 and finish up with 20. All right, all those in favor of the motion as read under Article 18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, it passes by the necessary two-thirds majority, and I declare it to be a vote. Thank you very much. We will now, it looks like it's about quarter past nine, so we'll now be in recess until 9:25. 9:25.[419.41]
All right, the meeting will come to order. Please take your seats. We're going to move forward with Article 19, which is also a zoning bylaw, the MBTA Communities Zoning Bylaw and Zoning Map Amendment. It requires a majority vote, not a two-thirds majority, I'll just point that out at the beginning. And you'll find most of that amendment in your town meeting report. And then some of the late-breaking changes, the most recent revisions, will be on your page update sheet. There are three or four changes to the text in your town report. And it's been moved and seconded by the Planning Board that the town vote to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant, subject to the following modifications, I'm sorry, Article 19, and subject to the modifications that you see on page two of your update sheet. So I think we have a presentation first from the Planning Board. First, I'll ask if the Planning Board held their required public hearing on this zoning amendment.
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board held public hearings and voted through, four-fifths of the Planning Board voted to send this to town meeting floor. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the Planning Board, you may give your presentation, Article 19.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As everyone is aware, Littleton is one of the 179 MBTA communities that have been designated for multifamily housing. In 2023, March of this year, the Attorney General told us, this is not an option, we have to do the zoning. If you're familiar with the site, we've been looking at this site for over six years. We had a 40R proposed for it a couple of years ago. We've had 350 units. We're now coming before you with a plan that will hopefully keep the, satisfy the Attorney General and keep us in compliance with the MBTA Communities Agreement. We're hoping that a project, the 150 units, so let me go backwards. The Town of Littleton is obligated to do 750 units of multifamily housing. 600 of that project is going to be allocated to 550 King Street. The remaining 150 have to be within a half a mile of the train station. That's Etchsteinstown, the governor is not changing that. That's the law. That's what we have to work with. So we came up with this bylaw, which is, it's a zoning amendment. There is no project associated with this other than we are changing the zoning on a 34-acre parcel. 10 acres of that are going to be zoned residential. The remaining will stay just as it is. If you were aware, at the beginning of this process, we were trying to use all 34 acres. We were not able to use all 34 acres because of the density that the Governor's Office wanted, which is 15 units per acre. We had to break the parcel up into two parcels, one at 10. The remaining 24 will stay as they are, zone industrial, but stay as, there are no proposals to do anything with that at this point. The Governor has told us in no uncertain terms that we have to use the site that is viable. Close to the train station, and this property is walking distance to the train station. There is not a building on it. It is zoned industrial now. We're taking a piece of industrial, which could have another Amazon warehouse on it or something, and turn it into housing. And for that, the Governor is going to keep, will stay in compliance, and the Governor's mandate will be moving forward. What we're hoping to do out there as we move forward with this is to get four sale units. If you've looked around Littleton lately, you've seen the only thing going in the Town of Littleton are four-bedroom, $1 million houses. We have no senior housing. We have no affordable housing. We have no first-time home buyers. We have no empty nesters, none of that. It's all four bedrooms, $1 million houses. The hope is that with the density that we're proposing here and the help from the Governor's Office, that we can get subsidized grants and start building housing that the Town of Littleton is lacking. We have nothing. It's either $1 million or nothing. So that's one of the reasons. The other reason that we looked at this site and chose this site is because the Governor has told us in no uncertain terms, it has to be a viable site. Meaning, you have to be able to build something on it. This site is empty. There's nothing on it right now. We're taking industrial land and turning it back to residential, which I think residents on Foster Street would rather see that than a warehouse. And there are not buildings on it. We're not taking $30 million worth of buildings and putting a $15 million project on. The Governor's going to take one look at that and say, that's not viable. That's not happening. That's, you're trying to circumvent our zoning, and that will be rejected and sent back to us. The other issue is, what happens if we don't do anything? If we just sit there and bury our hands in the sand and say, nope, the Governor's going to come back and change the bylaw, you know, we're not going to have to do this? Ladies and gentlemen, that's not happening. Phase one of this project through the Governor's Office has to be, cities and towns have to be compliant by December of this year. Lexington, Arlington, all the cities and towns that have MBTA and commuter rail have to be compliant by December. The Governor hasn't changed the bylaw one bit. They're not coming to their aid to make it more desirable. The bylaw is the bylaw. The template that the, excuse me, the template that the Governor sent us, we're using in this bylaw exactly what they want us to do. We've changed it a little to adapt it to Littleton, but we're trying to keep everything in compliance. And what does it mean to be in compliance with the Governor's mandate? If we're in compliance, last week, the Town of Littleton got a $4 million grant, second largest grant of any town in the state, for infrastructure in the Town of Littleton. We also had $3 million worth of loans, low-interest loans forgiven by the Governor's Office. We also have $9.5 million worth of grants that have already been approved for the Town of Littleton. So we're looking at $17 million in round numbers, 16 and a half, in round numbers that have already been approved. If we're not in compliance, and if we don't approve this tonight, we will be out of compliance tomorrow. And Emily, our expert, will speak about compliance in a second. We'll be out of compliance. So we're going to go from the top of the list. We were number, we were the, one of the top towns that the Governor gave money to. We'll go to the bottom of the list. And come spring of next year, when we're looking for more money, when we're looking for money for schools, when we're looking for money for infrastructure, we need more money for the sewer, we're not going to be number one, we're not going to be on the top of the list. We'll be on the bottom, and there's a very good possibility that we won't get any money. Of the 179 MBTA communities, 61% of them were units, were towns that the Governor granted funds to. So it's very important, the Governor's looking at this and wants us to do the zoning. The other reason is because we don't have any middle zoning. We all we have is, like, as I said earlier, we have zoning for four-bedroom, $1 million houses. There is nothing else in here. Empty nesters, and I see a couple of people that might be senior citizens like myself, there's no place to go. If you can't sell your house, there's no place for you to go, you got to move out of Littleton. The Governor, in her meeting, we went, myself, Ryan, and Cory from the Water Department were at Suffolk Downs last week when the Governor rolled out her community one-stop granting. That's 16 agencies that are all under one roof to give money away to cities and towns to give grants, low-interest loans, everything else for housing and infrastructure in the Town of Littleton. Governor told us in no uncertain terms, if you're not compliant with the MBTA Communities, you're not going to get any money from us. So, we're under the gun to do this. It makes sense to put it on this property right there because it gets the industrial component out of the neighborhoods in Foster Street. And as you heard earlier, Article 16 or whatever it was, phase one of the rebuilding of Foster Street is going on. Phase two is scheduled for hopefully next year, and phase three, a couple of years later, to make Foster Street a better road. Make it more usable, more pedestrian-friendly, wider, safer road. So, that is also, it has nothing to do with this zoning amendment, but it's stuff that we've been thinking about. Again, like, diversity, I'm looking at diversity of housing, phasing, and if, Emily, maybe Emily can speak to the compliance issue right now so that you understand what the consequences are if we don't approve this.
With your permission, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily Keys Ennis. I'm the President of Ennis Associates, and I'm the Lead Consultant on the two-consultant team that has been working with the Planning Board and with the town on finding ways that you can become compliant with this requirement. Mark, the Chair of the Planning Board, has stated it correctly. The Attorney General has indicated that towns must be in compliance with this law. You do have to comply with all of the requirements. However, you have a choice in how you comply. And you've already done a lot of the hard work. The King Street Common gets you 80% of the way there, with one small modification to that zoning today. The proposal from the Planning Board for the new zoning gets you that remaining 20%. That remaining 20% must, according to the guidelines from the state, be within the half-mile of the train station. So you have that proposal before you. As I said, you're almost there. But I have been asked to tell you what the consequences of non-compliance are. So the town is currently in interim compliance. That meant that they filed an action plan last year. That action plan stated how the town intended to become in compliance, and that included bringing an article to this fall special town meeting. If you vote the article down tonight, or if you make changes to the article that would reduce the unit capacity or the land area that are calculated by the compliance model, a little bit of technical speak, but just to let you know that there's some changes that would be difficult to deal with. If you come out of compliance with the changes, then you are no longer following the action plan laid out by the town and agreed to to the state. So they will be looking at that and deciding whether or not they revoke your interim compliance. That is a possibility. I'm not, however, the state, so I'm not going to speak for how they do that. You do have that second chance, though, to try and come back into compliance. That would be to come to your spring town meeting. But just so you know, that the grants that your Chair was speaking about, the deadline for those grants is the beginning of June. So you're cutting it pretty fine, because what happens once you have voted on zoning that should bring you into compliance, is it then goes, along with the supporting materials, to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, or HLC, for their review. And they can take several months to review it. So, the fear, the worry, is that by waiting until spring to come into compliance, you will not be in compliance during those grant rounds. As has already been mentioned, Littleton has received a great deal of money in the grants, and that is something that is of concern. I will just say that, just to echo a couple of things.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, of course. Did I go over my time? I apologize.
We're out of time. Can you wrap things up in a minute or two?
I can wrap things up in one minute or less.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. I just wanted to say that the choice the Planning Board made for this particular area was based on previous planning work done by the town, including the master plan, including some very specific planning for that area over time. So, it, you know, was something that the town had already considered for housing. This just merely moves that stage of the planning forward. So thank you for your time. Apologize for going over.
Thank you. Okay. I guess, are there any of the boards or committees that have taken a position that would like to speak to town meeting? If not, we'll open it up to the floor. I guess we'll open it up to the floor. Steve, go ahead.
I'm Steve Lyons, 145 Foster Street. I live in one of the older houses on Foster Street, and the building is only 15 feet from the road. You are methodically destroying the value of my property, and I just do not like that. When I first got here, that train station was supposed to be temporary. Anyone who's been here for 25 or 30 years knows that. Rather than voting for this thing, I think we should vote it down and tell the MBTA to move the train station over across the swamp where there's 35 acres of industrial property. And across the street from that is plenty of empty space for lots and lots of, you know, buildings. It does not belong on Foster Street. It's one of the older, more beautiful streets in the town, and you are methodically ruining it. Don't make me run for one of your offices, because I will if this keeps going.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Quinn Canfield, 238 Foster. So I have two questions. The first is that taking this parcel and making it residential doesn't remove the likelihood that the rest of the parcel is still going to have industrial, as you said, Walmart, whatever you threatened us with a few minutes ago. So I don't see how that changes anything. What we get is 150 houses plus Walmart's distribution center, not instead of. And the second point is that changing the zoning to residential doesn't force the owner of this property, which is not this Town of Littleton, to build anything on this. They can still put up, I assume, they can still put up roughly 10 houses there with one-acre zoning. Am I wrong about that? Why is that? It's zoned, can someone explain why that's incorrect? Those are my two questions.
Thank you. I think we have an answer, but maybe you didn't see.
Let me answer your first question. First question, it was Amazon, not Walmart, but originally, all 34 acres were going to be included in this bylaw. We had to cut it down to 10 acres and 20 acres left in its natural state because the Governor made us do it for the density. There was no proposal before us. We haven't talked to anybody else about doing anything with that land other than housing out there. If you don't do anything, all 34 acres are zoned industrial, and it could all be industrial. At least 10 acres is guaranteed not to be, and hopefully the rest of it will stand its natural state. There was no proposal, there was no project on it. This is just a zoning change in order to put a project on there.
You didn't answer either of the questions.
The second question is yes. If you zone it residential, you'd have to go before us to put a subdivision in there, and it doesn't have any frontage on Foster Street, so it would be pretty tough to put a subdivision road in there with just an easement. It wouldn't pass. This is site-specific to this particular property, and we did it the way the Governor wanted, so the only thing that can go on here is that. No housing, no other things, just the MBTA.
Okay, so, just so we're clear, the zoning changes, we allow residential housing, whether you approve it or not, it's not the question they asked. And the first part of that was, you're still going to put your Amazon, you could put your Amazon, in the other part of the parcel, the other 20 acres. So, we're getting, we could get the worst of all, this, not the best.
I can't tell you what else is going to happen. All I can tell you is that-
Okay, thank you, that's all I asked.
The other thing, you can't put housing on there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, George Sanders. I'm not going to run for nobody's office here. First and foremost, I just want to tell the citizen here in Littleton, I care about Littleton first and foremost. And I've been burning a lot of midnight oil, writing letters about Littleton and trying to get grant money in here for the water treatment plant, and also for the sewer. And with regards to this, maybe a lot of people don't understand how the state and the federal government operates. This is a mandate. This is not asking you, do you want it? It's a mandate. And I asked the consultant at the Planning Board, does that mean that we have to put 20% of the housing there? And he said yes. Whether we like it or not, there are certain things that we don't want to lose. We don't want to lose the ability of receiving grant money for the many projects that Littleton has going on. We have good ties with the state with regards to getting grants put through for the Town of Littleton. And I tell you, whether you want to recognize it or not, this is a mandate, and you vote tonight, know that message goes back to the state saying that you are a community that is against housing. Housing is the number-one priority in this state for the Governor. I just sent a letter off to the Secretary of State, not the Secretary of State, Secretary of Housing, asking him for money with the 150 to put in a pumping station if it goes there, or wherever the 700 units go, to get more land for a discharge site. You're going to need more land for the sewer system for discharge. Now, we can be smart about this and vote this through, or we can take the risk of losing monies going to the bottom of the line with regards to our needs in this town. And I don't think that we should go to the bottom of the line to do this. We all know that we need housing, and the Governor is going to push this. And we need to make sure that we comply, and I'm out of time, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Sure. Yes, Jerry.
Jerry Delpiori. This is really a minor point, but Section 173, 253, under building height, it says 35 feet or three stories, and 55 feet or five stories. It seems like a builder could exceed the building height within the story limit. And I would like to offer an amendment to read the max, excuse me, please. I would offer an amendment that say the maximum building shall be three stories with a maximum height of 35 feet, five stories with a maximum height of 55 feet. That way, you're guaranteed both the stories and the maximum height. And a couple of other comments. In terms of the state, if we don't like it, take it up with the state. They've dumped this on us, we've got no choice. And as far as one-size-fits-all zoning, we have opened the town up a lot to multifamily and higher density.
Okay, if you could give us that proposed amendment, please, Jerry, in writing, that would, that would be helpful. And just a, and just a word of caution, I don't know that we do zoning that well on the floor of town meeting. I mean, a lot goes into these proposals that come before town meeting and to try to fix it on the fly. It's not always the greatest idea, in my opinion. Anyway, next, yes, sir.
Hi, it's Robert Stevens from 28 Moore Lane. As I understand it, we're going to be approving between King Street and down here 750 new units in town. Is that correct? So if I figure four people per unit, we're adding 3,000 people to the population of the town. And we've got, what, 8,000 people now? So we'll go increase it by about 37%. And that means 37% more people in the schools, 37% more. Have we looked at what the impact on our taxes will be with all of this, with the added schools and the added police and the added everything? Or do you debate my numbers?
Well, I think the population of the town is over 10,000, but I'll stop there.
Okay, so we're going from 10 to 13,000. So we're, things are going up by 30%, which means it'll be 30% more people in the schools.
Mr. Montanari, do you have something?
We are mandated to have 10% of those units for families, which means the 150 units down at the MBTA train station will have 15 units that would be more than two-bedroom, one or two-bedroom units. So 15, not 30%, 15 units.
So, between the 750 units, what's your prediction for growth in the town for population?
It's going to take 10 years to build out everything that we've approved in the Town of Littleton. 550 King Street is going to take eight to 10 years before that, even if it ever is completely built out. It's going to be a function of if people want to come here, if people want to buy the units. And of those units out there, only 10% of them have to be-
So there's nothing that says anything's ever going to be built?
It's going to be driven by the economy. If people don't want to spend the money to buy the units or rent the units, they're not going to, obviously, developers are not going to build it. I can't, Littleton usually takes 10 years to grow 1,000 people. This is our next 10 years' worth of growth.
Yes, sir.
Daryl Baker, Griss Mill Road. I promised my wife that I wasn't going to speak multiple times tonight, but I find I am here. I've been disappointed in the quality of some of the presentations tonight. And in the earlier one we just heard here, I think we heard conflicting information relative to the presentation. He said at one point that the state wouldn't accept a $15 million development if there's $30 million worth of buildings already there. I look at the site, the site is undeveloped at this point. There's 30 acres undeveloped. There is no development there now, so there is no trade-off that the state would challenge us on there. So I take exception to some of the information being presented here. But more significantly, I also am concerned about why we'd be talking about adding housing along the railroad tracks instead of along the street frontage, which is going to be a much more desirable thing for people to buy into versus along the railroad tracks. Why was that site selected rather than having the subdivision set so that it was 10 acres more desirable within that lot? The industrial part could extend around the back and not necessarily occupy the entire frontage along Foster Street. So these choices seem almost arbitrary, and I find it hard to see that the Planning Board is recommending putting housing along the railroad tracks rather than along the frontage. I don't have any specific question, I'm just having a comment that I'm not happy with what, the way we've been presenting information tonight.
I want to answer your question. You're missing the point of what I was trying to say. The property, one of the properties that was, the town looked at, had two buildings on it. $30 million worth of space already on it, and the talk was to put it there. The Governor would never approve a property that had 30. This has nothing. This is virgin property. This is perfect for it. That's what I'm trying to say. Not that there's any buildings, there's not any buildings. You missed that point.
All right, all right, I think that's enough.
We put the 10 acres in the back to give a buffer to the residents.
We can't have this back and forth. Yeah, okay, thank you, yeah. No talking. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Ed Foltz, 619 Newtown. You know, I am so tired of the Planning Board threatening us at every town meeting. King Street, you have to do this or else. This fiasco right now, you better do it or else. The Planning Board has got to stop threatening this town and start working for this town. That's number one. The property, the apartments, 10 years from now, Mr. Montanari probably won't be here. He'll probably have moved to some other place, who knows? I don't know. But in 10 years, let's assume he uses the 10 years, we have 10,000 people in town, and we're asking to put essentially 10% of that as new units, and, I'm sorry, so you say you don't have any children, you're still going to have potentially two people, husband and wife, mother, you know, son, whatever, I don't know. And so we're talking about humongo increase in units, destroying the character of the town. Mr. Montanari said, we don't have any middle-level housing. We don't have any affordable housing. Well, I very much disagree with that. We're well over our 10% affordable housing. That's how we were able to stop being required to do the various permits that we were required years ago, because we're over the 10% affordable housing. So we do have affordable housing. We do have middle-range housing. Just because where you live might be million-dollar houses, I can tell you, where I live, they're not million-dollar houses. And many other places I drive are not million-dollar houses. Yes, Apple Dior and some of the others are building 7, 800,000, million-dollar houses, but that's not all of Littleton. And that's what we've been fighting for as well, is we want to keep the character of the town what it is. And your project, your project's plural because of King Street, is destroying this character of the town. The state likes us. What does that matter to me or anyone in this town that you get to hobnob with the Governor? Okay? That was another big argument that everybody talked about. Well, we're really good, they said in the special selectmen's meeting as well, that we're on the top of the list with the state. Well, I'm sorry, I'd rather not be on the top of the list with the state if the state is going to start tearing our town. They're going to put things in the town that we don't want. It's just wrong. And we do have a choice. We always have a choice. And we do have a choice, we always have a choice. And in my opinion, the choice tonight is to reject this amendment, this warrant.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. My name is Beth Cale. I live at 29 Harwood Ave. You may see me down a narrow road. Harwood is narrow, like Foster is. You may see me struggling with my two golden retrievers on a daily basis going down the road. People do use those roads, and it's important for us to understand who uses them, right? I look around this room. I'm over 50 years old, I'm pretty close to 60. Most people are at least that here. I know, we've only lived in this town for eight years. We lived in Acton for 20 years. I can tell you, if you remember the Deduka Farm on 2A where Trader Joe's is now, there was a huge issue in Acton on when the Dedukas had to sell it. They had a plan with a developer who was connected to the community and said, "Guess what? We're going to do this and this, and we're going to leave this open space here." Well, people in the town didn't want to hear it, didn't believe the developer, I can understand that. I'm in business too, I get it. What ended up happening, though, is it was zoned industrial, so the Dedukas had to sell. The little old lady was 90 years old. And what happened? The developer that was going to do good by the town walked away. The developer that then came in, that's why you have the whole strip mall that you have. The whole left side was going to be open space. So now there's a similar situation here. I understand it's housing and not retail. However, you have the opportunity to control what goes there. The person who owns that land is not a developer. The person who owns that land is a Littleton person who has lived here for 30, over 30 years, and who has connections and is emotionally connected to the land, emotionally connected to the town. So what you're going to force him to do is sell this to Amazon, and I don't know about you people, I live, in my house, 29, is the yellow house, it's, I don't know, 12 feet from the road. 20, 50% more Amazon trucks? So now we're going to have Walmart trucks, or we're going to have Target trucks, we're going to have Wayfair trucks, whatever it is. I'd rather see us commit to helping people find housing, because I know the house that we moved into, that was our downsized house now, I could never afford that house now. I could never afford that house if I'm a first-time homebuyer coming in with my kids. You want people with kids to come into this town and be connected. You don't want people to come in and manage that 34 acres that have no connection to this town, which would be industrial use. That's my opinion, and I hope that you would vote for it, because remember, all this is is a zoning change. It's not applying or approving any specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Hello, Littleton. I'm Anna Houston, 55 Jennifer Street. Last evening at the planning board meeting, the chair denied my chance to speak my mind, so I'm going to do that now. I am the person who voted no at last Thursday's planning board meeting. I want to be very clear about something. Yes, I support the MBTA Communities Law because it is in Littleton's interest to comply, and it is a mandate. However, my vote tonight is going to be no. And my vote tonight is going to be no because I do not support this location at 245 Foster Street. I favor the other locations at Taylor and Foster because of infrastructure that is already existing there. Water, electricity already exists. That also includes concrete, so that we aren't disturbing the green space to make way for houses in the future. And it intuitively means less traffic coming down Foster Street, which is one of the main concerns of residents in the area. So as I understand it, from what was said this evening, that we are in a situation of perhaps not being in compliance if we don't submit something before the end of this year. And the consultant said that they may revoke the interim town compliance. May, that's the key word there, may, right? So approving this just doesn't make sense for Littleton. We can hear how much residents don't want it by previous statements. When I came to town seven years ago, one of the regret stories, I say regret stories, is people who said, "You know, I really wish this wasn't there." And that particular project was the Acton Toyota. This is the same dread that I hear from people now for 245 Foster Street being zoned for housing. I believe that if we vote yes, we will regret it. Let's send this back to the planning board and ask them to look at the other parcels in earnest and not just give it lip service as was given this year. With more time, we have an opportunity to look at this properly and to include design guidelines, and also to determine whether or not the correct lot is actually further up the street. One of the things that I really wanted to mention about King Street Common is this. If there is any flexibility at all with that particular piece of it, then it would be great, because right now, we have 1,065 units going in between the IBM site and the mill, and that's over 42% of 750. We are building 42% more than what the state is mandating us to build. And if we can get that approved at King Street Common, something that apparently previously wasn't going to be okay, but now there might be some flexibility, then I say we go for it. And finally, I want to point out one thing on the FAQ that was created by the consultant and that was handout at the table. If you look on the back page, page two, where it talks about the number of units, it was talked about, I've been talking about how we only want 150 there. Well, guess what? Now because of the math, it could be up to 204 units. We didn't talk about that at the planning board, but there it is. So I urge everybody to consider this as what we want to do. Thank you.
Time's up, thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Grua, 64 Beaverbrook Road. I am on a couple of committees, but this is my own personal opinion. So I just wanted a couple of things, not referencing any particular things, but the, talking about the Massachusetts Grants, that is, it's not like it's magic money that comes from the state. That's our money, we pay for it with taxes. So I just want to make sure that if anyone who's wanting to vote against this, consider that you are denying us the use of our own tax money. And if, just keep that in mind, if you're going to take our money away from us. Talking about adding people, building housing units isn't really how you make other people. The people exist. We're not magically making them out of thin air, and they need somewhere to live. And putting them next to the train station is one of the least impactful ways that we can house them and they can contribute to our town. Yeah. The last two points, which is 10% affordability is the argument I hear a lot, that's an arbitrary line. If you talk to anybody who's been in the housing market in like the last 10 years, it's, nothing's affordable. Unless you manage to get to the top of a government waitlist for some sort of subsidized housing, you're not getting anything for, maybe not a million, but like, 700,000 was two years ago, that's not, you can't even get anything that cheap anymore. And then I remember one of the planning board meetings, the owners came with a proposal for how that parcel could be, I think it was four warehouses? I forget the exact specifics, but they had a plan drawn up that was in line with the existing zoning regulations. So it wouldn't need the formal approval process. They could just build this, and, I mean, if I'd been strung along by the town for five years and just said, "Enough of this, I'm just going to build these warehouses," that's probably what I would do. But, yeah, so those are just the points I wanted to chat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
Charles Howe, 564 Newtown Road. I've looked at the MBTA Communities Act multiple times. The state mandates that you have a parcel within a half a mile of this train station. The reason they're doing this is their idea is that the people that will be living there will be commuting on the train to work, so that's going to cut down on some of the traffic that you're going to see. The other thing is that the mandate is, like you said, written, so you have to do it, you don't have a choice. There's only going to be, as the thing says, possibility of 204 units. All you're doing today is designating this property. This possibility, there may never be units built there. All the state is requiring you to do is set aside a parcel where units could be built. They don't have to be built. They could put a shared driveway in and put, what, two, three houses on a shared driveway? You know, the developer could decide to do that, "I don't want to put all these units, I'm just going to put three, you know, million-dollar houses in there and I'm done." So you're not approving the houses being built in there, you're just approving the ability to add these houses to that. And that's what the state requires as power of their bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, we didn't forget about Mr. Del Priory's proposed amendment. In fact, the planning board has voted to accept it as a friendly amendment. If I could ask council to read it to you. It doesn't require a vote, because the proponents have accepted it. But, council?
Again, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Tom Harrington, Town Council. So this is an amendment to Section 173-253, Dimensional Requirements, subsection C. And it currently reads, and I'm going to tell you what's being inserted, "The maximum building height is," insertion, "three stories with a maximum height of 35 feet," back to original, "with a line parallel to and 300 feet from Foster Street." New language. "And five stories with a maximum height of 55 feet, four buildings sited between that line and the property line along Interstate Route 495." This is, in effect, the same, or maybe a better way of saying what was already there. Mr. Del Priory raised a concern that there might be some confusion between the height of a story and the height of the building. This corrects that. It's been accepted unanimously by the planning board, so it is now part of the motion before town meeting.
Thank you. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Cheryl Cowley, 44 Tadawin Road. I promise to be really brief. I get really tired of the statistics the planning board's throwing around, and I just, as a real estate broker, want to correct some of them. Of the 76 houses that sold in Littleton in the last 12 months, 22 of them were sold for less than $550,000. That is very much middle-income, at about a third of the 76 houses. Of that number, 12 houses were sold for over a million. So that is 20%. But we have our middle-income houses. I just have a house under agreement on Foster Street that was asking $499, and it's a nice Cape, three bedrooms, two full baths. We have middle housing in town. You are not the only ones living in middle housing. You're not alone. We also have a whole lot of low-income housing in the form, I'm not even talking about the condominiums that have sold or the rentals in town. We have a lot of low-income housing in town also. We're well over our 10% required by the state. We're building senior housing at a rate that's amazing. It's good to have senior housing, but it seems like it's a lot. I'm a senior too, I'm 65 this year. But we're also building 1,000 units over by the common, and that's a lot for this town to absorb even in 10 years. So we've got to take a deep breath. There are other, Foster Street is an old street, it's narrow, people live very, their houses are very close to it, and there are parcels, like Ms. Houston said, that border on Taylor Road and would keep us away from it. I don't think that the state's going to immediately revoke all our grants. I don't think a meteor is going to hit this building either. You know, it's just, we get a lot of threats, and if we don't do this, we'll get that. Sometimes we've got to take them with a grain of salt, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, Mr. Moderator. My name is Sami Islam. I live on Gillian Way. First of all, I want to thank the planning board for all the good work they've put in. I think the concept is really at night, but I'm, tonight, I'm voting no. There's a lot of detail here that needs to be sorted out. As just pointed out, there was an amendment here that we are doing it on the fly. There's a lot of detail. For example, if you read the actual zoning bylaw amendment, it does not give any discretion to the planning board to really provide input into what will be proposed there as housing. So the planning board needs to do a lot more work to sort that out. And I actually watched the recording of the planning board, that was October 12th, and there was an agreement there. We want our planning board to do a good job to get, have a consensus among them before they propose it, bring it to us. That's number two. And also, section, article 173-255, section H, it actually allows the planning board to waive all the requirements within that article. So it just does not give any flexibility to the planning board to really make good calls here. So I'm going to be voting no. I think the planning board should go back, do more work, come back in the spring town meeting and bring the concept back to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Joanne Deary from Harwood Avenue. I'm looking at the map on the, like, kind of tan-colored handout that we got, specifically Exhibit A of 245 Foster Street. And just off the bottom edge of this map, Foster Street goes underneath Route 2A, and then it climbs a hill and it tees into Taylor Street. Along the same side of Foster Street is the suggested parcel, there's two former digital buildings that are between Route 2 and Taylor Street. They're totally underutilized. I actually taught my daughter how to drive in those parking lots because there's hardly any cars there. And if we're zoning something for like future housing, why wouldn't we zone those two parcels of land that already, you know, have a bunch of pavement and everything? They're already messed up. They're not like former farmland that could be future farmland. And in addition, right across Taylor Street from where Foster Street tees into Taylor, there's a, you know, like a 30 or 40-acre parcel of land that's been on sale for like 35 years that I know of. It's vacant, there's nothing on it except, you know, a whole bunch of knotweed. What about that? Those three parcels would be more likely to direct people either to the train station or to the highways instead of having, was it 204 units' worth of drivers trying to get back down Foster Street into the center of town. I just think there's other parcels that would be better suited than this one. And I think it's unfortunate to consign this parcel to like residential development when it's former farmland, like, you know, we're going to be needing that, maybe sometime soon.
Thank you.
Robin Sewell, 60 Foster Street. I'm just wondering if there's been any research on other communities that have turned down this project and what specific repercussions they've had. I know that there's a lot of money supposedly tied up in grants and further things, so could any of the boards address that and give us some specifics about how we might be impacted if, depending on how we vote tonight?
Thank you. Yes?
With your permission, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the previous speaker, there is one town, the town of Holden, a few months ago, apparently their elected leadership said that they were not, under any circumstances, going to comply. They have been since sued by a third party under the Fair Housing Act. I don't know the progress of that lawsuit, but that's the last I heard. The town of Milton recently requested, this is actually in a Boston Globe spotlight, the town of Milton recently requested the state to reconsider its status as a rapid transit community. That was denied. There's a letter from the state that you can find online that has denied that. There's a letter from the state that you can find online that has denied that. And the town of Middleborough has, again, this is in online reports, the town of Middleborough has said that they are complying reluctantly. I have not seen the documents. The newspaper report states, however, that not only the town, but also private developers have been told that reluctant compliance will be taken into account when they look at grant applications from both the town and the developers. Again, that's a news report. I do not have any evidence of that. Lexington and Arlington have both passed what they believe to be compliant zoning. My understanding is that the state is still reviewing that and has not yet given a final determination, or at least I haven't seen a response on that. So those are five communities, of which I know their status.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce Torrell, 201 Harwood Avenue. A couple of things. We've covered a lot of ground here, but first of all, it's not a mandate. We're here to vote, right? If it was a mandate, we could just stay home, right? So that's the first thing. The second thing, I mean, there's been a lot of talk about improvements to Foster Street, and then we heard tonight about phase one, phase two, phase three, and some people still seem to think it's all coincidental or something. It seems unlikely that that's the case. It seems like the change in the zoning feeds into the new, feeds into the new units, all the units, which feeds into the road improvements and all the rest. So it seems it's been a little disingenuous, I would say. At least, you know, that's the way it appears. The other thing, I would say, I'm not a big fan of high-density housing. I know that seems to be the vogue. I grew up an act, and I moved to Littleton because it was less congested, less this, less that. It was really a nicer place. To a previous speaker who spoke, there's a lot of affordable housing in Littleton. My first house was over in the Long Lake area. It was an old camp. My father helped me renovate, so still a very modest place. You know, we bought something later on. But I think there's as much opportunity here as there is anyplace else, and as far as all the grants and all that, that seems like, almost like governmental extortion. You know, it just seems almost illegitimate, so I don't really appreciate that either. So I'm voting against it, obviously, but, you know, it's been a good discussion, a lot to think about, so I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Mitt Wanzur, 39 Mill Road. Mr. Moderator, could we move the question?
Certainly could. But to move the question, that's a motion to close debate, requires a second. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. It's not a debatable motion, so we'll take a vote on the motion to close debate. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Debate is closed. We'll now move to the vote under the main motion on Article 19, as amended earlier tonight. And all those in favor of the motion under Article 19, as written in the town warrant, the town meeting report, and as further amended on the town meeting update sheet this evening and on the floor of town meeting by friendly amendment with the planning board. I think, actually, I think we're going to want a counted vote, Madam Clerk, if that's possible. So I'm going to ask that all those in favor of this zoning amendment, and it does require a majority vote. Yep, I'm going to have to count. Yep. So all those in favor, please raise your hand and keep it raised until you've been counted. If we could prevail upon the same counters to help us out, that would be great. All right, all those opposed, please raise your hands. Keep them held up until you're certain you've been counted. We'll lose the transcription.
We're working on that right now.
Okay. Okay. We should have a tally very shortly for you. And I know it's pretty close to 10:30, but I'll show you, we're going to continue after All right, there were 269 total votes cast. There were 125 in favor and 144 opposed, and the article fails. Okay, moving on then to our final article of the evening, Article 20. It's been moved and seconded by the Conservation Commission that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1.4 million for the purpose of purchasing the Webster property, so-called, and for costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is hereby authorized to borrow the sum of $1.4 million under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 of the general laws as amended, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town. Further, that said appropriation is contingent upon the receipt and acceptance by the select board of a note of conversion and right of first refusal pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 61, Section 8, and that the select board is authorized to enter into a contract or contracts for said purpose. I should have pointed out that this is on the tan update sheet, the revised motion for Article 20. So that is the motion, and the proponents have a presentation. Mr. Chase Gerbig of the Conservation Commission will give the presentation. That'll be followed by a presentation in opposition by the Finance Committee, and then we'll hear from any boards or committees that have taken a position on this article, and we'll open it up to the floor for debate after that. But right now, I'm going to recognize Chase Gerbig.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. As Tim said, I'm Chase Gerbig, co-chair of the Conservation Commission. If we can flip to the next slide, you guys may recognize this portion of town. What I want to do here is I want to lay out the parcel that we're talking about. I'm going to talk about the finances, and then I'm going to talk about the conservation aspects of this. I'm going to try desperately to keep us to 10 minutes here because I know it's getting late. So what you see in yellow here is the portion of land that we're talking about. It's sort of south of the interchange. If you go to the next slide, what we're looking at here is a zoomed-in image of this piece of property, and you can see that it essentially sits between Crane Road to the south, Bulkeley to the east, Foster to the north, and Taylor to the west. It's got road access along Bulkeley Road, and we're going to sort of look at a series of maps and figures associated with this piece of property as we go through. So if we could go to the next slide, I want to hit this first because I know, or I expect anyway, that most of the questions are going to be around the funding of this, the financing of this, and frankly, the differential between the appraised price and the developer offer. What you see in the town meeting warrant laid out the fact that we have this differential. So what I want to do is I want to sort of take you through the two aspects of this, the two numbers that we're looking at, keeping in mind that what we're looking at in terms of a borrowing article here is $1.4 million, which is actually a bit less than the developer offer. So first, let me go through the appraisal piece of this. So we originally looked at this. We didn't know how much it was going to be. We looked at funding opportunities, and the first step in that is getting an appraisal to understand what the property could be worth. That appraisal came in at $630,000, and I'm going to show you sort of what that appraisal was based on. If we can go to the next slide here. What we're looking at here is the plan that was incorporated into the appraisal. So what this plan is showing you is, in the dark green, those are the wetlands portions of the property. Now, one thing you have to keep in mind with respect to wetlands is, wetlands doesn't just mean swamps and marshes. It means hydroxic soils. And so even though there are portions of this that are wetland, they are, they're accessible. There are other portions that aren't, and we'll talk about those. But what you need to understand about wetlands is that in Littleton, we've got a bylaw that says you're not allowed to build within 50 feet of a wetland unless you achieve certain exceptions. And one of the, the exception that really matters here is that the project would need to be in the public interest. And so what we worked with the sellers, the Websters, on was a plan that said, listen, this is a very difficult site to build on, and the only way that we could see something potentially being viable is if it achieved a public-interest exception. And in order to achieve that public-interest exception, what we said was that it needed to be deeply affordable, and we worked with a representative of the planning board to define quantitatively what deeply affordable meant. But what it ultimately means is that we ended up with this project where we've got a 66-unit senior residential development sort of tucked into the south-central portion of the property with some wetlands crossings. I want to tell you, too, that this plan probably, there's additional complications to this plan. We actually think there's another wetland crossing close to the road that would need to be addressed. So understand that these things evolve as a conceptual plan first for the purposes of developing an appraisal. And to be perfectly honest with you, it's not obvious to me that if this was a single-family home project, it would be permissible at all because it's unable to access that published, public-interest exception. So if we move on to the next slide here, so that's sort of the underpinnings of the appraisal, and there may be more questions, but we can take those as they come. What I want to move on to is the developer offer. So we got that appraisal, and we, I actually thought we had a home run. We thought, great, this is, we'll get this piece of property for the town for $630,000. What the Websters indicated to us is that they had developers sort of looking at this, and that valuation, although they were willing to take a haircut on the property for conservation purposes, they couldn't take that big of a haircut. And we, as a town, said that, that's unfortunate, you have to go do what you got to do then. And so they went out and engaged with a developer who put together an offer. And that offer came in at $1.6 million, and the Websters came back to us and said, we do have this offer, and, you know, would the town be interested in matching that? And obviously, the central question here is, this is complicated, right? Like, it's hard to sort of stomach this idea that there might be a developer offer out there that so significantly exceeds the appraisal offer, and we've struggled with this. And honestly, don't bring this to you lightly to consider. When we look at this, there are a couple of factors that we think about that could impact the, sort of, the delta. You know, the natural question is, why is the developer willing to offer 1.6, and the appraisal only comes in at 630? And one of those, and this is probably the simplest one, is the appraisal, appraisal is vary, right? But I want to tell you, maybe the appraisal varies by 20%, right? It doesn't vary from $630,000 up to 1.6 million. So if we went out and got this reappraised, we might end up with a different number, but we won't necessarily end up with 1.6 million. If you want to go back one slide, another element here is that this is a concept plan. I think there are a lot of opportunities for the developer to modify this plan. In fact, I would expect it to be modified. So you've got places like big upland areas, how the site is accessed, all of those things could play into a developer offer that are not being factored into the appraisal because of some timeline constraints that I'll touch on. And then the third piece is really a risk issue. To the extent that the developer is willing to take on more risk, they may value it higher. The problem for the town in that case is, they take on the risk. If they ultimately found out they made a bad bet and they go bankrupt after it's constructed, we're still out of the opportunity to conserve this conservation land. So all of those three pieces sort of layered together. You've probably heard that the developer originally proposed an offer that had a due diligence period in it that they could back out of. We've since remedied that with the Websters and the developer, such that there is no due diligence period, and town council has looked at it, a lot of people have looked at it. Essentially, a valid offer worth considering. So I've only got a few minutes left, so what I want to do is flip to the next slide. Here's just the general price of conservation land, the three, the two, the last ones that we've acquired, and the Webster land, understanding that this all represents what the town would use it for. All of these properties are comparable in some way in terms of town use. They're not necessarily comparable in terms of development. Browns Woods, for example, the higher valuation in $20, $23, it was easier to develop. It was only 30% wetlands, which is, versus here, might be 45% wetland. So, but I want to give you a sense of, as we look at this, we've got the developer offer, we also have how we use conservation land, and when we look at it that way, the price starts to look more reasonable. And therein is why we've brought this to town meeting, to sort of evaluate where the town stands in these issues. We'll flip forward. So we've got a couple of things going on here that are sort of worthy of considering in terms of conservation. The first is the historically and culturally significant aspects of this. The historical commission has looked at this, identified various historically significant portions of this property that not just are European in origin, but pre-European settlers, and in particular, to the southeastern portion of the property, a Native American ceremonial stone landscape. That's effigies and cairns and so on that are indicative of Native American use of this land prior to European settlement. We also have indications from European settlement. And really, what this starts to speak to is the sense of place associated with this. I mean, I will tell you that, you know, my children don't associate things like the point with Littleton. They associate the conservation lands that they hang out in. They associate the streams, the water, the fall foliage. And so this has been a place with a sense of place for a very long time. We'll flip forward one more. We'll flip forward one more slide. So what we're looking at in this in terms of conservation is, we've got a lot of different ecosystems here, and that's part of what makes it really interesting, both from a sort of wildlife perspective and from a recreational use perspective. That is, one might hike through woodlands into open meadows across a perennial stream, through emergent marshes, and around a vernal pool. Those are both really cool, really useful, really valuable conservation aspects. They're also, like, from a recreation standpoint, the bugs and bunnies really like those, too, right? The interfaces of these. And so if you flip forward one more slide, what you see up here are a series of photos to help you understand sort of this sense of place, where we are and and what we're potentially looking at purchasing. And, you know, I understand that the the money challenges are going to be a big issue here. Let me pause. Mr. Moderator, could I have maybe thirty extra seconds? Is that okay with you?
Sure.
Okay. We're going to go thirty seconds long here. The sense of place of this is really important to sort of grasp and understand, and it really comes down to priorities. In our open space and recreation plan and our master plan, over and over and over again, we talk about open space, controlling development, maintaining character, who we are as a vital component of what we want as this town. And so this particular property gives us an opportunity to actually act on that, and it's challenging. I understand it's challenging in terms of price. What I want to tell you is, when we prioritize something, we find ways to fund it. In fact, just tonight, we talked about how Indian Hill is a priority, and yeah, it's going to cost $2 million more, so we're going to put $4 million into the stabilization fund, but we'll figure out how to how to pay for that extra $2 million. And I understand, a lot of people didn't like that, but it was a priority, and that's what we did. Similarly, we decided that it was our priority to spend $1 million on a Shaker Lane feasibility study instead of $700,000. So I don't have a lot of slam dunk solutions here. Conservation Commission doesn't have the power of the purse. But what I will tell you is that we have some options in terms of funding that I think we should consider. One, you know, to the extent that we might be putting excess money in CPC funds outside of the surcharge, we might have to take a break on those for a while. To the extent that there is additional money coming in in the first year for back taxes on this land because it's currently part of chapter land, maybe we assign that. But at the end of the day, maybe those are good or bad ideas. What Town Meeting is being asked to do is express whether or not this is a priority and whether or not we should figure out a way to fund this and ultimately acquire this land. So I appreciate your leave for going a little bit long. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we now have a presentation in opposition from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Vannoudi, Finance Committee. I can be the first one to tell you that the Finance Committee are not experts in open space. We don't claim to be. We don't claim to know how to build a building. We don't claim to how to purchase an ambulance. What we do do is take all the information from the departments and boards and committees that have projects or expenses for the town, and we prioritize them, just as Chase explained. Somebody has to prioritize these expenses, and we do that in a way that we're trying to spend the town's money in the best possible way that we can. We'd had several meetings with joint meetings, FinCom, Select Board, Conservation Committee, prior to this article back in late September, early October. And we heard the descriptions that that we heard tonight about the parcel. We heard from the seller talk about the history of the parcel and the artifacts that were there. We heard about the potential buyer. We heard about the appraisal, $630,000 appraisal, $1.4 million adjusted price. The other thing that we heard at the first meeting with Conservation Commission is they stood up in describing the parcel and said that this parcel checked a lot of the boxes for a good open space purchase for the town. A lot of the boxes, $800,000 over the appraised value, 220% for a parcel that checks a lot of the boxes. In the Finance Committee's mind, this sets a bad precedent in ignoring this appraisal, especially when you when you start to look at the parcels that may come in the future that do check all of those boxes. We now have, the town is willing to spend over the appraised value for a parcel. The appraisal looks for the highest and best use, and Chase was talking about this just just a second ago. For land, it's what can be built on that parcel, and you saw that this land is very hard to build on, and it's because of those limitations that the value in that appraisal is down to $630,000. Whether we agree with the findings of that appraisal or not, it set the value of this parcel, and let me tell you why that's important. Today, November first was the due date for second quarter property taxes. I hope everybody paid their tax bill. If you looked at your tax bill, you saw a line item that says CPA surcharge. It's on everybody's tax bill, Community Preservation Act, 1% surcharge that's added to everybody's tax bill, and it's put in a separate account for the town, and those funds are used for purchases just like this. We can do, as the Select Board mentioned today, we can do recreation, open space, historical projects, or housing projects. Mass. General Law puts those restrictions on the use of those dollars. Tonight, we used some of those dollars for the tennis courts. In the past, we've used those dollars to purchase open space parcels. In each one of those cases where we purchased open space parcels, the purchase price was at or below the appraised value, and we used CPA dollars to fund those those projects in combination, some with some grant money that we got. We have $2.00 million sitting in those CPA accounts right now, and we can't touch a dollar of that because the state regulates what we can do with those funds, and part of their regulation says you cannot spend a single dollar of those funds if the purchase price is over the appraised value. Those funds are off the table. The general fund of the town, the operating budget, has to take control of that expense from that point forward. We're looking at in FY '25, and the Finance Committee, a couple of years ago, identified FY '25 and FY '26 as particularly hard years for budgeting purposes. That's what it was based on two years ago when they were looking forward. We're looking at it today, and we have a lot better information, and I can tell you, they were absolutely correct, and these two years coming forward are going to be absolutely tough. Let me give you a few examples. The fire chief, our interim fire chief, was at a selectman's meeting about two months ago. He was talking about the staffing issues at the fire department. The current staff cannot handle the volume of calls that they currently have. He told the selectmen he'd be adding three additional firefighters to his budget for FY '25. The police chief, at this town meeting, originally had a request for a police officer. He saw that the funding wasn't available and the priority wasn't going to be there. He pulled that officer from this warrant, but told us when he did that, it would be back in the FY '25 budget. Oh, and by the way, I also have an additional officer that I was already going to put into the plan. That's five public safety officers, new to the budget in FY '25. Salaries, benefits, uniforms, equipment, we're talking around $600,000, new expense FY '25. The teachers' union recently signed their contract with the school department. Three and a quarter percent increase on salaries for FY '25. Little over $11 million in teacher salaries currently. That is $380,000 contractual obligation, have to pay, high priority. Four town unions, police, fire, DPW, dispatch, contracts all come due at the last day of this fiscal year. Be entering negotiations with those unions. We just settled with the teachers for a three and a quarter percent increase. I tend to think that those unions aren't going to sell for anything less than three and a quarter percent. Another $11 million in salaries, $357,000 contractual obligation, high priority, FY[1223.58][1223.58]'25. Article thirteen tonight was a 10% betterment charge for a SOAR system, for the town buildings hooking up to the new SOAR. Guess when the other 90% comes due? FY '25, $800,000. Couple of years ago, we approved a senior center, $18.5 million. Construction state is slated to start in March of next year. We'll be bonding this project in FY '26, but in the meantime, we'll be issuing short-term debt to pay the construction costs. FY '25, $675,000 interest-only payments, and FY '26, we'll be issuing the debt, $1,485,000, principal and interest payment averaging $1.1 million over the 20 years. The school department at the end of last week sent us their estimate for a budget increase for FY '25, $1.5 million. Some of that includes the teachers. Don't want to double count anything there. So I just outlined $3.9 million in new expenses for FY '25. The new revenues for next year are estimated $1.7 million. Before we even start, we're in a deficit position of $2.2 million, and we haven't even looked at the expenses in the current budget that would increase, things like health insurance, pension expense, utility payments. Funding this this purchase would be through debt service. Twenty-year bond payment, $154,000 in expenses, the first year, FY '25. $114,000 average over the 20-year period. Not approving this parcel certainly isn't going to solve all those problems that we have that we're going to be facing in the budget. It's not going to do it. But when you think of the priority list of the items that I just went through, where does this land purchase fall? Contractual obligations, have to pay. Debt service, have to pay, high priority.
Steve, that's ten minutes. Do you need another minute or two?
Another minute.
Thank you.
Yep. The betterment, have to pay, high priority. This land purchase comes in at the bottom of that list. What are the things that I didn't mention? Where are the the five public safety offices? They're also at the bottom of that list. We have a trade-off to think of. Purchasing this land, $154,000 in expenses, public safety offices. School department, roughly $800,000 in new expense for them. It's not really the reason why the Finance Committee is saying no to this, that $154,000. It's the fact that we can't use CPA funds, that we're ignoring the appraisal for $630,000 with a purchase price of $1.4 million, and that ignoring the appraisal and paying above the appraised value for a parcel that checks a lot of the boxes is setting a bad precedent for the town for the next open space purchase. Finance Committee revoted their their options tonight. We have all seven members here. We voted six to one not to approve this article. We ask the Town Meeting, join us in voting no on this land purchase and walking away from this purchase. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does the I noticed that the Select Board also had a voted position on the article. Does anyone wish to speak to that?
Nope.
I mean, it's it's in the warrant, so.
We had a split vote, three to two. It doesn't appear that anyone in the majority needs to speak at this time. We'll be here for questions.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll open the debate up, and we'll hear from you. Yes, Steve?
Steve Glance from Foster Street. Just to remind everybody, we're talking about buying some land. I don't know what this last was going on about. By the way, I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of buying this land, but you've got to know what you're buying. Everybody know what the town swamp is? Excuse me, town forest on Foster Street? I walked all over that place with my dog. It's 95% swamp. That drawing up there is really deceptive. I doubt that there's even an acre of land up there that can be built on. I've been all over the place. By the way, the only real access is from Grimes Lane. You cannot get there from Foster Street. It's a swamp. It's a swamp. There's a a brand-new path being built on there. It's a boardwalk. It's a half a mile into there, it's a boardwalk because it's a swamp. Now, I'm all in favor of buying it, but I would like to know, instead of buying this piece of property, why don't we buy the piece of property right next to the train station, which is beautiful farmland? That would be far more useful as a recreational area than this. Now, I'm all in favor of buying both, actually, but know what you're getting. This is a piece of swamp. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Julie Snyder. I live on Harwood Avenue. There's no question, this property is worth saving. The question is, what is it worth? Tonight, we voted down the compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. Potentially, that could cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant money in the coming years. We just don't know. The problem is, this land is appraised at $630,000, money that could come from our conservation funding. But because, as Mr. Vannoudi pointed out, they've decided to price it extortionately high, we cannot pay for it with anything other than the general funds. That means you and I lose. Maybe police, fire, school, any town service could be cut to buy conservation land that arguably is not developable. They say they have an offer for $1.6 million. We have town boards, particularly the Board of Appeals, whose job it is to make sure that special permits are not handed out like candy on Halloween. So let's hope that if this town meeting decides, as I have, to reject buying this portion of land for $1.6 or $1.4 million, money that is going to come out of your pockets in terms of taxes, come out of your lifestyle in terms of services that you will get, this will result in a poorer lifestyle for people in Littleton. It may result in higher taxes, which God knows, I've never heard anybody say their taxes are too low here. So if a developer buys this, I hope our town boards will do their due diligence to make sure that as much of this land that is historical, that is invariably mentally valuable, is preserved, that they stand up against developers who so far have been shown the red carpet in Littleton. I hope that time and era has come to a close. But this, we cannot afford to buy this land. This comes directly out of your pocket and my pocket and our kids' pockets and everything that affects us as Littletonians. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Neil Peterson, Whitcomb Ave. The value, I assume, is based on the offer from the builder. Has anyone on the Board of Selectmen seen that offer or confirmed there is funding?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. We have seen the offer. We have had it vetted by town council. It is a bona fide offer. We have not seen proof of funding from the developer.
Okay. Okay. And the selectmen, so you guys voted to, to support this. Can you tell us why?
I will, actually. I was one of the three who voted for it. I am very sensitive to everyone's concerns about cost. It is coming out of my pocket as well, if, if we vote for it, if I vote for it. However, the budget struggle happens every year. Every year, we have more things that we want to fund than we have money, and we always make trade-offs. And to me, it's a matter of priorities. We may be able to exist as a town for another year without a firefighter or a police officer, but if we pass up this opportunity to save this land, we're never going to get a chance to save it again. And there's simply no other way to say it but that. One of my priorities is preserving open space. I believe it does add to the character of this town. I deeply enjoy being able to walk in the woods with my children and my wife, and I want to continue to be able to do that. And I feel that my priority is to help preserve the, the land of this town for future generations who want to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Reese, two A Matthew Drive. I think the, thank the Conservation Commission for their work. I think they're doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing. But the, the difference between the appraised amount and the offer that's outstanding, I think is bizarre, to say the least. The, the commission has certainly attempted to explain that, or explain some of the reasons why that might be the case, but I do not find them convincing. I think that whole discrepancy just lends an air of, I think we'd better steer clear of this. I don't know what's going on there, and I'm, I'm not sure anyone here does. The finance committee has done also an excellent job pointing out what this town can afford and can't afford, and I totally agree with their conclusion that this is an item we can't afford, and it certainly does not meet with our priorities. I also wonder how many people in this room would ever wander through that land and take advantage of it. It sounds like swampland, and I don't think it's very hospitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Gretchen Webster, thirty-three Bulkeley Lane. Bulkeley Road. Nervous. Thank you to the Conservation Commission for, and Chase especially, for that outstanding presentation. I wish you had had more slides and pictures to show you how truly remarkable this property is. It was carved out of the original Nishoba plantation that was to become Littleton. He, Chase shared that, that it creates a green space corridor from Long Lake all the way around to Oak Hill. What you don't know is that we borrowed significantly to purchase out four siblings to settle Lyle's mother's estate. The estate was, was settled using the development value of the land. The co-executors had a fiduciary responsibility to research what developers will pay, and they spoke to four different developers to, to create the, to create the, to settle the, the estate. If Lyle and I hadn't stepped forward to borrow money to buy it, significant amount of money to buy it, it would have already been developed by now in a heartbeat. Some folks have questioned the deed from 2022, and what you need to know is that it represents only part of the financial history. Lyle and I paid for two of his siblings to establish new homes before we settled the estate. So the deed represents the remainder, not the totality of our financial obligation, what we owe the people we borrowed from. You also need to know that the appraisal factors and the cost of building a road. The road and engineering was projected at up to one point three-five million. But here's what we don't understand. The two most recent Littleton Conservation acquisitions, Joyce Williams' property and Brown's Woods, didn't have infrastructure and engineering factored into their appraisal values. Our appraisal was different from the appraisal terms of the other properties, and we don't understand why. We do have a valid purchase and sale agreement from a developer. However, it is our strong preference and the desire of our hearts that this land be preserved as conservation land for the benefit of the town of Littleton and the legacy of the Nishoba-praying Indians. In the interest of preserving this historic land, Lyle and I are prepared to accept two hundred thousand dollars less than the offer we received for the thirty-six point five acres. We want to be very clear with Littleton voters. We are not making any money from this land sale. We are, in fact, losing money, but that is how strongly we feel. Over a hundred people have walked the land in the last month and learned about Littleton's history through the lens of ecology and humanity. It's part of the history, it's part of your history as much as it is ours.
Does time, please?
Thank you. We thank you. Thank you.
Hi, it's Joy Ann Deary from Harwood Avenue. A trillion and a half times, that's trillion with a T, a trillion and a half times, this little patch of woods has rolled from the dark into the light, and at every moment, there's an eyelash-sized slice of the earth's surface that rolls from the dark into the light, and that is dawn. And this dawn has been welcomed by the chorus of birds. Wherever you happen to might wake up, that dawn chorus probably only lasts a couple of minutes, but it has been going on continuously, unceasingly, for tens of millions of years until we arrived. We develop. We develop at an astounding pace, and we put in lawns, and we mow them weekly to the property line. We replace the native plants with introduced ornamentals, and we create food deserts for insects, birds, and the other animals that are here. The cacophony of our 21st century suburban existence, it prevents birds from finding their mates. They can't even hear each other. We leave outdoor lights on all night long. I don't understand why people do this, but it confuses migrating birds, most of which do migrate at night, and it makes it impossible for insects to find mates and complete their life cycles. So I guess my point here is, this land, this parcel of land, is worth much more to the, our predecessors, birds, insects, bobcats, coyotes, everything. It's got two streams, it has a rainmaker swamp, there's a vernal pool. Those are all things that make it so perfect for them. If you like butterflies, fireflies, any kinds of animals, this is the resource they need, and they can't get it where we've mowed our lawns to the property line. So I hope you'll think about it and vote wisely.
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, I'm Blaine Hodling. I'm twenty-eight Few Drive. I was one of the hundred people that got a chance to walk this beautiful land. I was unaware of it. I went there, and I was in awe. I'm telling you, they do not make a nicer piece of property than this for outdoors people, and I think a lot of people in Littleton really are outdoors people. We have, what, eighteen or twenty conservation lands? I think we should preserve as much land as we possibly can. We can always find a place to put a house, okay, but we cannot always find a place as beautiful as this. That whole Native American structure is unbelievably breathless, just breathless. We have a very strong affinity to our Nishoba-praying Indians that settled here before us, okay? And we also have, you know, this appraisal, I, I don't know where this is coming from, except that somebody was looking at it as a building appraisal, and we're not planning on building there. It's not a really great buildable lot. It's not a swamp, okay? It is wet land, okay? I walked through it. I didn't even have my boots on, okay? I walked through a few puddles, I crossed a couple of streams, okay? I was not up to here in, you know, swamp reeds or anything like that. It, it's just, we have to talk about the quality of our life in Littleton, and people are sort of very polarized about, you know, spending too much money, but then you, we always do find the money when we want it, when we need it, for the things we think we want. I'll trade you four tennis courts for this piece of property. Unbelievable piece of property, okay? Really. We can find a place for tennis courts somewhere, but we'll never find this piece of land again. It's gorgeous. It's totally gorgeous. I just think we have to say, I'm sorry that it costs so much, but down the road, we are going to be so glad we put up for it. Thank you for voting for it.
All right. Yes, sir. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Tim. Lyle Webster, thirty-three Bulkeley Road and the Webster property. Ann Himmelberger at ninety-three walked the property. You're all welcome to come walk the property. She crossed the stream. It's not a swamp. We may all be grateful for the work of our finance committee, which has established and preserved our excellent bond ratings for money management. We must also be grateful for the other groups in town charged with the task to watch over our other resources. Acquiring the Webster land for preservation and conservation for open space and recreation has the unanimous approval of four of these groups: Conservation Commission, Conservation Trust, Community Preservation Commission, and Historic Commission. These four groups all agree that this land has value, and they encourage your vote to preserve. While it may not be Yellowstone or Yosemite, it's the way God made it, and the Websters would like to see it preserved. As Chase has illustrated for you here tonight, the open space value aligns with the two previous purchases made by vote of this town at previous town meetings. Each of the other properties also has water features present. A parcel of this size in New England is likely going to contain water. With our memories refreshed by the presentation tonight, on the town's master plan, acquiring the Webster land addresses nine of the sixty-seven goals. Any of you know, who know me well, that I treasure my connections through the colonial history of this land? As wonderful as it is that my family and the Bulkeley family go back to the very beginning of the colonial era here in Massachusetts, the Nishoba-praying Indians have all the centuries of history preceding that. Here we are in American Indian Heritage Month. Your yes vote here tonight gives you the opportunity to quite literally come down on the right side of history. Walking this land will enable you to be part of all of that colonial history. Appreciating the ceremonial stone landscape will allow you to experience the culture that has called this place home for all the centuries preceding that. Your yes vote here tonight will also preserve all of the features of the land that allow for all of the species present to have their well-being, while also helping to conserve our local environment for the health of the planet. Two families have been the stewards of this land since it was carved out of the Nishoba plantation. We now seek the help of our town to preserve it in perpetuity for all the generations to come.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
George Sanders, six seven two Great Ruin. Mr. Moderator, this has been a sad night here tonight for me, of twenty-seven years in this town. I just wonder if we would have heard the report from the FINCOM telling us how bad we are in need here if this land was not on this warrant? I'd like to know that. It seems like someone is not doing their due diligence in telling the people in this town how bad we are financially. And if that being the case, I think you ought to take a look at the amount of money that's transferred from the overlay into stabilization of the four million dollars if we got this kind of problem. I'm a realist. I understand, and I appreciate what FINCOM has done. You can't ignore that. One of the things you can't do is make land. It is a commodity. When it's gone, it's gone. But at the same time, we need to understand here, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, that if we vote to do this, something is going to have to give, and I certainly wouldn't want it to be an ambulance or EMT that was not available to take care when our citizen that needed the service. I had a colon used to tell me, he said, "Top," that's what he called me, he said, "You've got to be smarter than a rock." He said, "If you take a rock and a feather and throw it in the river, the rock will go to the bottom and the feather will fly forever." There's no need to get all bent out of shape here, but there is a need to have an understanding here, what people are saying. You say you want to keep the characteristics of this town, having it rule, but then you got to save the land. In order to do that, we also need to take into account what FINCOM has told us about our ability to function as a town that can support the needs of this town, which provides services for us, the people in this town. This is no small issue here tonight. It is a sad one. And Lord, help us because we definitely need it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Rob Houston, Jennifer Street. Much has been said about the Webster property being too wet and therefore not as valuable as the developer has committed to paying, or is valuable to us residents at the even lower price than the Webster's, that the Webster's are willing to sell it to us. This doesn't make sense. If it did not have the diverse ecosystems and streams running through it, the value to a developer and therefore cost to the town would be much, much higher. Remember, over seven years ago, another developer paid over one point eight million dollars for the thirty-six acre Cooper Farm property and promptly built thirty-nine houses. But because it is less desirable from a development standpoint does not mean that it is not desirable or capable of being developed at all, and rest assured that once sold to the developer, it will be. Nor does it mean that it is not more desirable to the town from an education, conservation, and climate resili- resiliency standpoint. This property is not some swamp. Rather, it is a large and diverse property containing different characteristics and ecosystems, including a mix of forest and field areas, streams, and a certifiable vernal pool, all of which provide important wildlife habitat and is resilient to changing temperatures, rainfall, and storm events. Forests and wetlands both capture significant amounts of carbon, and wetlands store floodwaters that are slowly released instead of immediately pouring out over neighboring communities, properties. There have been observed and documented wildlife using the area, including bobcat, deer, bear, fisher cat, red fox, and others. From a historical standpoint, this property is incredibly unique in that it has been owned continuously for centuries by only two Littleton families. That most of us have never heard of it or seen of it is not a bad thing. It's actually what makes this such an amazing and awesome opportunity for us. If we purchase it, then we all will get to walk it, to experience it, and to see and learn from the various historic colonial and Native American features and artifacts that are dispersed throughout the property. Finally, we can afford to buy this beautiful land and preserve and enjoy it in perpetuity without raising our taxes or impacting future services and operational budgets. I have tremendous confidence in our finance department, the finance committee, and our select board to fund this purchase without any tax increase or impact on our operational budgets, and to claim otherwise diminishes your skills. Please vote yes, and make the choice to preserve and protect this pristine and historic piece of property, ecosystem, and habitat from destruction and development.
Thank you. Yes. Sherid Elpeyor.
Sherrod Elpory. This type of conservation land, or the ability to buy conservation land, comes up rarely. The previous speaker brought up Cooper Farm. That was under 61A. The town had first right of refusal, and the developer went out of their way to circumvent that so they could build their little yuppieville on that property. Here we have a chance of a willing seller to give the town a break to purchase this property. I know there's a big disconnect between an appraisal, which I don't know how many years ago it was done, and what a developer is willing to pay. If this is truly a signed purchase and sale that's binding on both parties, then the land will be sold for 1.6 mil, and you could argue that is the fair value. The town is getting a bargain. Every time we've ever bought conservation land, we always hear the same argument. It costs too much. It'll never be built. Five or 10 years later, I don't think anybody has ever once regretted a purchase of conservation land. Buy it while we have the chance, please.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Andrew McNaut, Long Lake Road. I'm here today not only as a private citizen, but as a member of the Board of the Littleton Conservation Trust, which is a private land trust here in town. We serve as a caretaker for certain properties and work to preserve our natural resources. We unanimously support the acquisition of the Webster property and are asking other residents to support this article as well. We have several reasons why we feel strongly about the acquisition of this property, and we'd like to offer a few for everyone's consideration. Year after year, town meeting after town meeting, and tonight has been absolutely no exception, the most controversial articles here in Littleton always have to do with development and loss of property to commercial and residential growth. In that regard, we submit, anytime we as voters have a chance to preserve and conserve property, we should take that as a great opportunity. There's always urgency behind potential acquisition of conservation land because there may not be many more opportunities. There's a finite number, and we need to preserve what is left of Littleton's rural character, and that shrinks daily. The most important conservation land acquisition is always the next one. This is no exception. Now, not only is this property important because of its location, its natural resources, they've been well documented tonight by other speakers, educational purposes, recreational purposes, a great resource to help our unique sense of place, which is something we feel strongly about guarding. The native structures, this property is trail-ready. It is not a swampland. That's where Littleton Conservation Trust comes in. We've been tangibly supporting the purchase of this land. We've recently started a pledge. We've raised nearly $10,000 already in approximately one or two weeks. We will continue to raise money to offset the purchase. We will work to make sure that this land is accessible to all. As I said, it's trail-ready, and we will continue to make sure it remains a fantastic asset that it is. We're also tax-paying citizens, and something we want people to understand is that we're voters with a financial stake in this town. It's worth reemphasizing that the recently dropped price of 1.4 million for these 36 acres is very reasonable and far less than what we have paid in the past and what surrounding towns are paying right now for conservation land. Chase put the graphic up, $38,000 an acre. It's a good price. It's a fair price. One of the best financial investments taxpayers can make. People who are concerned about the bottom line. We heard from Fincom. If they, if you want to preserve and increase your own property values, but also mitigate the costs associated with increased development on our infrastructure, we've heard about Foster Street, King Street, fire departments, police departments, school, we know what those increased costs are going to happen. They're going to be passed along to us. We have a rare chance to fight back with conservation land, and that's to protect it from the development and those increased costs.
Time.
Thank you.
Charlotte Russell, 73 Foster Street. I have deep respect for the finance committee and especially for Mr. Vinudi, and I can probably count on the fingers of one hand the time I haven't voted the way he recommended. One of our selectmen made a point. We talked earlier tonight about the inevitable development that's happening at the top of Foster Street, and one of our selectmen made the point that conservation land will be even more important with development there and high-density development. I'm one of the people that had the privilege of walking this property. Not a swamp, as other people have said. It's got a diversity of habitat, wildlife, birds. I thought it was a beautiful piece of property. However, no matter how beautiful I think it is, I don't consider it sacred like the Native Americans, whose extraordinary formations still exist on that property. I started delving into my genealogy a few years ago, and I already knew that I was kind of unremittingly descended from English settlers here in the 1600s. And I found out one of my direct ancestors took part in leading a delegation from Plymouth to the Great Swamp Massacre in King Philip's War, where mostly women and children were slaughtered. It was one of the worst battles of that war. I'll be thinking about that. I don't feel guilty about that. I wasn't there. But I do think often about the fact that I'm here and some other Native American descendants are not here because of my ancestor. So I will be thinking about that when I vote yes, to preserve this land, not only for all of us townspeople who are here tonight, but also the Native Americans, the Nishoba praying Indians who still live in this state and exist in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Brad Austin at 8 Adam Street in Littleton. I see this question from three perspectives. The first is I'm a taxpayer. We want to make sure our money is well-spent and that we are careful stewards of public money, the money we take from each other. My second perspective is I was a member of the school committee. I used to sit with Justin over there. And I spent a lot of time thinking about town budgets. I believe everything the Fincom said about the austerity that we'll have to look at over the next couple of years. But I'm also a historian. That's my third perspective. I'm a historian with a degree in modern American history. Those are the classes I teach. I'm not an expert in early American history, but I can read a report. And I've read the reports that were submitted, the ones that were prepared by, for the Webster family. I listened to the discussions with the historic commission. We have a great historic commission, if you haven't ever gone to their meetings. I listened to their deliberations, and I shared the reports with friends who do have expertise, friends, I have friends who have PhDs in historical archaeology, friends who write books on Native American history. And although they've never walked the land, they couldn't tell you if it's a swamp or not. They can tell me that if everything in this report is accurately presented, this is a very, very rare opportunity we have in front of us, probably unique, to protect, to preserve, to interpret, and to share sites of real significance. We say in our master plan, we've talked about conservation. We've talked a lot about conservation. We also talk about, in our master plan and other documents, about honoring and respecting cultural diversity, both the present and the past, and using our town to educate the citizens and the region. I think this is a valuable opportunity. I'm not sure we'll ever have this opportunity again to preserve a site with such cultural significance, and I hope we support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Jenna Brownson, and I am the newest member of your financial committee, and I am the one dissenting vote. And I'm going to tell you why I'm the one dissenting vote, because my experience is I'm always curious on who's voting against the rest of their board. So I'm going to share with you why I am. I am because I have four children, and the world that they're looking at is pretty bleak. We have an opportunity to do something thinking about them. I wake up in my house that I have lived in my entire life to the sound of 495 and Route 2. It is louder than it has ever been. The private jets that fly over our town, I think that maybe they like to track on Route 2 or 495 because it's constant thrum over our heads. We have damaged the natural world. The land is in the state it was a long time ago. We have a chance to sort of pay reparations for the bad behaviors of our ancestors, of which I have them too, right? The land that my house is on abuts oak hill. I walk that land every day, every day. Those 220 acres are just as much mine as they are for the rest of you, and this would be the case for this land as well. As a member of finance committee, one of my first questions is, are we like a lobbying group for residential taxpayers? Because it kind of feels that way, right? Because our job is to keep taxes down. So I'm going to ask you to indulge in a thought experiment. You know how we could save taxes? We can go back to having our schools the way they were in the mid-'80s, when my parents said, "You're a 14-year-old girl who are now going to send to Acton to go to school." That's not a great time to like up and go someplace new and social. Nowadays, no one would choose Acton over Littleton because Littleton schools are great. We've invested a lot of money into those schools. So if I suggest to you to save money by gutting the school budget, you would say, "No, no." Our property taxes would go down, right? We want good schools so that when we go to sell our houses, they're worth more. All we can do now is buy land. Land that has been undisturbed, land that has a little stream and some moss and those Indian Native American stones. If the plot is developed, they can knock them all down because those aren't protected, which is another comment on how we treat things that were not ours.
Time.
Sarah Rambacher, Hartwell Avenue. I've been trying to listen to all the concerns, and I'd like to ask everyone a few questions. Do you know that open space preserves and raises your property values? Look it up. It, plenty of references, reputable references. $1 in land conservation creates $4 of economic value. That's also easy to find, trust for public lands. Do you know that Chelmsford just bought Coolest Farm as conservation land, says 40 acres, so a little bit larger, split by 495, they paid $4.1 million? Our precedent that we need to make is that we are good stewards of the land that we have here in town. If you value preserving this pristine, beautiful piece of Littleton, you should vote yes. If instead you care about property values and operating costs to the town and the rate of development, you actually should also vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. This man.
Marcy Wanzar, Mill Road. We are in the midst of a climate crisis. I think we all know that. We are also concurrently in a crisis of biodiversity loss. And we talk about value. Value, the differential of 600,000 versus 1.6 million. And I will say that this land has far more value than its monetary designation. We have to save open space. We have to save habitat. It is priceless, and it is for our well-being, our wellness, our physical health, our mental health, and for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy McCarthy, Brook Lane. A developer is in a business. He expects to buy property, build it, and make a profit. So if he's offering that much, that's worth it to him that much, and he's going to build. This property has historic, Native American, and conservation use value, but to me, one of the most telling factors was when it was described as being a direct green space corridor from Long Lake. We have fragmented habitat for wildlife to such a degree that there aren't deep forests for those animals that live, cannot live close to the edges. Wildlife corridors are the goal of much environmentalism, to allow animals to migrate, cross highways if possible with these animal crossings that are being developed these days. Animals cannot exist in these small, fragmented areas. Providing a continuous green space is a goal that is beyond our personal needs. It's not always about how we use the land, what its value is to us. We need to start thinking about wildlife as well. Thank you.
Bill Coromus, 33 Lake Warren Drive. I'm actually looking for a little bit more information. I'm kind of in the middle as for making a decision. I request that you put the map back up that shows the plot of the land, that one right there. I'm just curious, with all the environmental laws, wetland protection laws, how much could a developer develop based on the zoning of the land, and how much could they alter the ecosystem that exists presently?
It's a good question, and this picture gets at that to a large extent. So let me speak first from the wetlands perspective. If this is a project that is in the public interest, that they can work within the 0 to 50-foot buffer off of a wetland. If these were single-family million-dollar homes, that would be a no-disturb zone. So part of the premise of the appraisal was, frankly, developing this without working in the 50-foot would be incredibly difficult, bordering on impossible. So to that extent, what you see in the light green on the right-hand side is generally developable. What you see on the light green on the left-hand side, probably not developable because you'd have to furthermore go over a stream. There are challenges with that, though. What I want to be very careful of saying is, it's definitely this, or it's definitely that, because if this were to go to a developer, would ultimately, we'd have permitting authority. I assume planning board would look at it and so on. But what you do see is an area that they can work with here, as well as the light green area sort of in between the central part and the right part of the property. Those are upland areas that are generally buildable. The way the appraisal characterized it is, I'm spacing on it now. Essentially, the appraisal acknowledged this is very difficult, but it is not undevelopable for the right project.
So how many houses or structures could they build?
Well, so this is premised on a 66-unit, multifamily, senior residential development, and that is deeply affordable. And that deeply affordable piece was, the criteria associated with that was developed with a member of the planning board. And the reason that that was incorporated into this is because they need that exception, that public interest exception associated with deep affordability to work within the buffer. If these were single-family homes, we're probably looking at, you'd have to come in from different access points. I think we said probably five single-family homes.
Okay.
But you'd need different access points potentially to get in there, too.
So you're looking at like maybe five homes, if a developer bought it?
Sure. And our argument is that those, the value of the conservation land is as a whole, understanding that, yes, we could protect the wetlands, we can protect different bits and pieces, but conservation land in particular isn't, is, it is much more than the sum of its parts. So to break those apart and fracture them significantly dilutes their conservation value. Frankly, we see that at, you know, big developments that we already have permitted, where there's small bits that get sort of carved off that are not really particularly usable. And here, if you imagine, you know, the way the road, the development, et cetera, would lay out here, it would end up fracturing a big chunk of this.
With the retirement home?
Yes, and what you're looking at there is the road that would come through that, and they would, the developer would potentially be able to control a lot of the other aspects of the upland areas. And as far as the historical pieces are concerned, if this- of the upland areas. And as far as the historical pieces are concerned, if this was a bigger project, it might be subject to the Mass Environmental Policy Act, MEPA, which would have teeth to conserve the historical elements of this. But given the size, we don't think MEPA comes in, and so there's limited tools to really put teeth on conserving sort of the historical elements as well.
So this, if we buy it, then you develop the retirement home anyways, correct?
No, this is what a developer would put forward, or some version thereof.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Anna Houston, 55 Jennifer Street. I totally understand about trade-offs, and one of the things that I wanted to mention in this particular situation is that I hope that our Finance Committee and the town as a whole takes a look at the fact that we have a development coming in terms of King Street Common that is going to be providing more revenue. And I point to the document that was presented to us and the Planning Board on August 22nd, page 6 of 6. There is an estimate right now that they will be bringing in $5.582 million annually. Again, this is once a development is created, and they have included the annual cost of municipal services of $1.87 million, netting the town $3.775 million in, once it is built out. But over time, there is going to be an increase in revenue every single year until we get to that point. And so my point of this is, we have revenue that is going to be coming. Is it here right now? No, but this is one of the reasons why we have to take a look at all of these developments for various reasons, okay? In this particular, so I wanted to put that out there. These documents I'm referencing are available at the library, in the notebook, in the reference section. They're also available on the website. So back to the opportunity for buying this pristine open space. Again, when I arrived here seven years ago, the other topic that I heard a lot about was, and I could, it was palpable, the pride in our open space and how we wanted more. This is our chance, folks. Let's buy this land and go for a walk. I think that you will really appreciate it and all of its beauty. Thank you very much for considering voting yes.[832.43][832.43](APPLAUSE)
Thank you.
Eliza Bean, 27 Oak Road. I'm 18. I've lived here my whole life, and in that time, I've seen a lot of changes already. The woods behind my house is where Cooper Farm was, and I used to walk through those fields when I was a kid, and it's houses now. So please. Thank you.[867.13][867.13](APPLAUSE)
Thank you.
Anita Harding, 19 Russell Street. I don't think I'm going to be a welcome guest here at the speaker, but I wanted to just bring up some points. If it's true what Chase just said about that, the map that's up there, and that a lot of affordable housings, 88 units could possibly be built there, and take a look at that map very carefully at how much wetlands, infernal pools, and everything else would be left. It's important to understand that if a development goes there, because this is in the chapter land, the town will have to be paid a rollback tax, which could be significant, which would be money coming in towards whatever we need going forward. So I think is, I'm not the one that's going to be happy with all the few people, but I think it's important to take a look. The master plan asks for more housing, more development, more affordable housing. We heard that tonight. We can get 88 units possibly there and save a good portion of that wetland, undisturbed, and we would receive a rollback tax. That's my comment. My question is, two of the selectmen did not vote to go forward with this, and I was just wondering what the reasons were that the other two selectmen voted against it.
I am one of the two that voted not to recommend this article, and I am voting, I'm not voting for it tonight. My reasons stem from the financial impact. I think it's fiscally irresponsible for us to do this. We've been saying for the past four years that 2025 is going to be a tough year. Steve laid out, I've got a whole page of some of the anticipated expenses that we're coming up against. I'm not going to repeat it, especially in the interest of time. But there's, there's so many things that we want to do. We absolutely would love to buy this land. If we could get it for the appraised value, the appraisal was done by a licensed professional. The appraisal offers the highest and best use for that property. They're not pigeonholed into one use or another. $630,000, if we could buy it for $630,000, I don't think we'd all be here right now. It would have been a vote probably in the consent agenda, and well, couldn't have been because it's a purchased land. But it's just something that I think would have passed immediately. So we've got that money in our bank account, essentially. The Chelmsford Farm was mentioned, that did sell for $4.169 million at Chelmsford, Chelmsford last town meeting, using community preservation funds. So it came in at an appraisal that the state would authorize, and they were able to use community preservation funds. If we could use the CPC funding, this would be a no-brainer, wouldn't be having these discussions. Something else that was mentioned was the connectivity, Long Lake and Oak Hill, and it's almost like the Emerald Necklace, if you will, in Boston. I don't see this parcel as being part of the link of the town forest in Long Lake, in, you know, the whole loop of Two Brothers Trails. There are other parcels that could come available to us down the road. So I just don't see that this parcel for $1.6 million is a good fiscally responsible purchase. I did say that. I actually made a motion to not even put this on the warrant. I just felt that strongly. There's three things, three major things that the selectmen are charged with doing. You elect us to do. Elect, appoint the, and we're the boss of the town administrator, the police chief, and the fire chief. We are responsible policy, and we're responsible for the budget. It's not, wouldn't be, I don't feel as though we, I couldn't in good conscience recommend to the folks that elect us that this was a good purchase and that we should spend our money. It was about $1 million over the appraised value. Now it's down to about $800,000 over the appraised value. As far as the clawback through you to the previous speaker, we stand to make about $70,000 if it's the reach back for back taxes on the Chapter 61A land. The primary reason was the fiscal impact, the financial impact. We listed the priorities. Although open space is certainly a priority of the entire board and it's in our goals, it's part of the master plan. So is retaining our AAA bond rating and being good fiscal stewards as well.[1188.21][1188.21](APPLAUSE)
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. This is one of those articles that I think, you know, everybody in the room wants open space, I have to assume. We value it, and this is something that I've looked at hard over the last six months. I know the space. I've walked the area. I understand the value of that. My problem is some of the same discussions that took place up here with the Finance Committee. I won't reiterate some of the things they had. Regarding the appraisal, I would love to have seen a second appraisal, if people are questioning that appraisal. But I did the research, and I asked, I asked to find out where the, give me the specifics on why certain properties weren't used for the appraisal. The appraiser got back very eloquently, stated those reasons, convinced me of why he valued the land at where it was. I also would have suggested that when we're going to purchase a piece of property outside of CPA, why do we have, why do we have the CPA if we're going to go outside it when we can't use it? It doesn't make sense to me fiscally. I think it's financially reckless, and it sets a precedence going forward that any property owner can place any price on a property, and we have to sit here and debate it. I hate having debate, debate, debate this property because I understand the value of it, what it means to have open space in Littleton. But I wish we would put our money where our mouths are in a sense that if, I would like to create a policy that if you're going to go above the appraised value, it should go, subject to a debt exclusion, go outside the levy, put it on a ballot, and let the voters vote for it if they really want it. Otherwise, pay the appraised value inside, and we're done with it. And that would be a slam dunk. So that's kind of where I'm at. This was not an easy vote for me when we did it, and that's kind of where I'm going to leave it. And I don't think everybody in this room should be pitted against each other that way. We're pitted against each other because, you know, I looked the fire chief, police chief in the eye and asked them what their budgets were. You know, we know what these budgets are. They've been turned in. And I know what the consequences are, and what we're faced with, and how this balances against that, and let alone the rest of the budget, which Mr. Vannuti spoke to. So this specifically to me is if we're going to purchase land when we can't use a fund that was specifically designed to purchase it, then perhaps we should put it on a ballot vote and vote, and let the voters speak to it. And because then you're sure that they're willing to pay for it, and it's not going to affect the budgets of other departments. That's where I'm at.
Thank you.[1355.11][1355.11](APPLAUSE)
Actually, it's almost midnight. I want to call the manager of the vote, Larry Frazo, 7 Fox Lane. As I said, it's nearly midnight. Many, many people have left, which is disconcerting because this was an important vote. I'd like to call the manager of the vote at this point.[1371.01][1371.01](APPLAUSE)
Was it, that was a motion to close debate, essentially?
Yes.
Okay. Here a second. So a motion to close debate requires a second, is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of closing debate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Okay, I'd say that the debate is now closed, and now we'll move to the vote on the main motion under Article 20. It requires a two-thirds vote, and I'm not going to try to discern a two-thirds vote on a voice vote, so we're going to do a hand count, if you don't mind, unless you're feeling nostalgic for the ballot and checklist. We can always arrange that, but...
Yep, it's all set up.
Okay. So are our counters ready to go? Okay, they're fanning out as we speak. Article 20, purchase of the Webster property. All those in favor of the motion that was read some time ago, under Article 20, please signify by raising your hands and keeping it raised until you're sure you've been counted.[1453.01][1453.01](MUTTERING) We should have the results shortly. Let me take this time to thank the Select Board and the Finance Committee for their help with this meeting, certainly the interim town administrator, Ryan Ferrara, who's doing a heck of a job.[1593.72][1593.72](APPLAUSE) And where would we be without the town clerk and her team? We'd be nowhere.[1601.41][1601.41](APPLAUSE) And we can't forget LCTV. They do a great job putting this on air for shut-ins and so we can prove where we were tonight. Yeah, this is...
LCTV?
Yeah.
Can't hear you.
I did it.
You covered it.
Okay, just another minute. If you have to leave, you can leave, but...
You stayed this way.
Yeah, you stayed this far, so...
Toe?
Toe, yep. Yes, no need.
Okay, we have the results of the 20, we're 284 votes cast. So there are 189 required to pass the article. There were 177 in favor, 107 opposed. The article fails.[1761.01][1761.01](APPLAUSE) Okay, the two-year motion to dissolve this special town meeting. Great. Favor? Special town meeting is resolved.